Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen of February 7th, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting, which necessitates the reading of the following notice. This is to formally advise as required by General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law on June 16th, 2021, as extended by special legislation dated July 16th, 2022. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below in that Zoom information. Allowing people to come in that way is on the Yarmouth website. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Under announcements, regrettably, I want to acknowledge the passing of Betty Jane Burkhardt. She passed away on January 23rd of this year. She was also known as BJ Burkhardt. She was the active chair of the Personnel Board at the time of her passing aboard. She served on for 38 years. She previously served on the Finance Committee for 28 years, as well as Elections Warden for many years. She was an organized, reliable, fair member of these boards and took her role on these various committees and boards very seriously. Not only did the town lose a very dedicated volunteer and friend, but there was a lot of institutional knowledge that was lost also. We'll miss her very much, both as a person and as a town volunteer and board member. And we give our condolences to her family. And she was a very, very accomplished person outside of her service to the town. And if you want to read about that, her obituary is online. And interestingly, it starts off saying that being the independent woman that she was, she wrote the obituary herself. So I'm sure that it meets with her approval in every particular. It tells of her other service. She worked at Pan Am Airways in New York City prior to coming to the Cape. She had many years of service at the Cape Cod Community College as well, working in a support position to the president of the college, 28 years there. And all of that is chronicled in her, what should I say, kind of autobiographical obituary. And that's available online. So again, we really appreciate her family sharing her with us, and we all are the beneficiaries of her service to the town of Yarmouth. Let's go next to public comments.
Hi, Kathy Williams, Town Planner. I just want everyone to know that the town is working on updating our open space and recreation plan, and we're going to be having an open house tomorrow night at 6:00 PM here in the hearing room and also be available through remote access. We also have a survey that's available online. It's all available to the town website under News item.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else?
Hello. I am Jane Ade, and I live on Gingerbread Lane. And I'm kind of surprised we're here, addressing some of the same issues that I thought had been resolved. In the last many incarnations of this particular address, 134 6A, it was deemed that it's never been called a restaurant, it's been called a café. So the zoning does not call it commercial or business, it's home occupation. And has not been much of more than breakfast, lunch, and afternoon tea. So I guess the concern is that many new things are coming that sound a little of a stretch. There are high-intensity lights that were installed a month or so ago up in the trees, about 15 feet up in the trees between the sidewalk on 6A and the parking lot. And high-intensity lighting can be seen up to 1,300 square, 1,300 feet. So going in both directions on Route 6A and down through my house, down the hallway into the next house, are these intense, high-intensity lights that ought to be down playing on the parking lot's surface. Have the rules changed? Maybe not.
Okay, ma'am. This section of the hearing is just for public comment, not to engage in dialogue, but we are going to have a separate hearing on the license in a little bit.
And the dumpster that's always open for the last five incarnations, everyone in the neighborhood had to take their bird baths in because the night creatures would take out discarded food and wash it in the bird baths. So there are some interesting issues that lots of us were up at the Health Department five, 10, 15 years ago to try to address these things. I'd like to see a clean start.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Simmons, and I live on Gingerbread Lane. Spent most of my life there growing up. My dad was on many committees in town, so I feel it's my duty as now occupying the family home on Gingerbread Lane to speak up about the restaurant that's intending to open up. My concerns are the dumpster being totally open. I can see the dumpster open from the front of my yard by my front garden. I have some pictures, too. And also that in past years, we had a fence of some kind protecting it so you can't see the entire parking lot. As it is right now, the fence has been removed because it rotted, trees have been taken down. So it's very open to the street of Gingerbread Lane, the people that live across the street from it, and on the corner, and myself, and Jane, we can see everything, and I have pictures of that. The lighting is an issue because it does disturb the quality of life in the neighborhood to have very strong lighting like that on. Also permitting, if they're going to make any changes to signage, we want them to be in the proper culture that the historic district has. There are businesses that have opened up recently that have really shown us that they want to keep in the tone of the Old King's Highway, the Captain's Mile. This is a very special stretch of Yarmouth. And so I'm hoping that knowing this ahead of time before opening, we can all be good neighbors. So if anyone would like to see the pictures, I do have pictures here of the view of it right now. You can just see the parking lot, just the dirt, no trees, no fence, no covering. And also this one as well. I know it's winter, but the trees have been taken away, some of them. And there's also a picture, it's just from the end of my property. You can see the open dumpster here. I would imagine that they would want to put fencing around it like most restaurants do, and that would be greatly appreciated as soon as possible. And that's all I expect, just to keep in tone with the historic district as well. Thank you.
Could we see those photos?
Sure.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Vin Servantes, live at 15 Gingerbread Lane, which is just really kitty corner.
Just hold on a second.
Okay.
I want the other board members to be able to hear you.
Okay.
You ready, Mark, for the speaker? Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right, so I just live kitty corner, across the street in Gingerbread Lane, from the location of the restaurant. And just to comment on the visual aspect, which you guys are all going to be taking a look at, fairly recently, it was mostly just like brambles and so forth. But I think a Verizon crew came through, it was a year before last, and took a lot of that down because of the power lines that were there. So now, as you can see from the photos, it's really just right open to the parking lot. And I guess in years past, there was like a stockhead fence, you know, along the western and northern property line boundaries, and it'd be really nice to have that back. And also, in the springtime, there are a lot of people who come down Gingerbread Lane because of the cherry blossoms. So they like to go there and see that. As you just enter the street from 6A, you can see Cape Cod Bay. So in order to have that still be visually appealing, I think reinstalling a fence along that borderline, along those two borders, would be really nice to have.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a comment? I think that folks that are talking today are talking about 143 Route 6A that used to be the Optimus Café. And if I am correct, our folks that are here for the license tonight are here on the spot that was the previous Grill 43. Is that correct? A completely separate spot?
That's correct. It's 43 Route 6A. Okay, anyone else? Let's move on to our first licensing hearing then. We have an annual weekday entertainment and Sunday entertainment license application from the Yarmouth Senior Center. Good evening. Do you ladies want to introduce yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Diane Kane, Director of Senior Services.
Thank you, Diane.
I'm Nicole Bohan, Administrative Assistant to the Director of Senior Services.
Thank you. So I'll read the legal notice into the record, and then you can begin tell us what you want here. It's in your application, I know, but just make a brief presentation after I read this. "The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual weekday and Sunday entertainment license from the Town of Yarmouth Senior Center, 528 Forest Road, West Yarmouth. Diane Kane, manager. Weekday and Sunday entertainment is to include concert, dance, exhibition, cabaret, public show, live band up to four pieces, including singers, dancing by patrons, dancing by entertainers, recorded music, live music, amplification system, theatrical exhibition, stage play, moving picture shows, floor shows, jukebox, and TV. Proposed entertainment hours are 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Hearing will be held Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, February 3rd, 2023, in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth MA US. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." We want to hear your presentation, but what I'm a little bit, what's a little bit unusual just at first glance is that the hours, 7:00 AM through 12:00 AM.
Yeah, that was.
And secondly, you just about checked off every box that there is on the application. I mean, what I'd like to hear in your presentation is what you really want. Because the only thing missing from this is the partridge in a pear tree. So if you could kind of give us a sense of what you're really trying to do here.
We're here today to respectfully request an entertainment license for weekday and Sunday for the Yarmouth Senior Center. Ever since the Senior Center opened its doors in 1987, it was known as Betsy's Ballroom, after Betsy Drake, who taught and held ballroom dance to the dancing community on Cape Cod and beyond. They came because Betsy's had a floating floor that was easy on the joints and legs of the dancers. This is one of the reasons the Senior Center was built by our Friends Group over 30 years ago. Prior to the pandemic, the Senior Center was rented out seven days a week, bringing revenue into the town of approximately $22,000 to $30,000. We would rent out space to community for the events such as dances, meetings, condo association meetings, presentations, rehearsals, and band concerts, fitness, meditation retreats, anniversaries, birthdays, celebrations of life, a wedding, rotary Christmas parties, historical society yard sales, a church group, and many more. We are requesting tonight that an entertainment license continue to provide rental space for the Yarmouth community. And what we are really aiming for is to be able to continue doing what we have done in the past. So we provide rental space.
So what you're saying is that you're not just looking at activities that the Senior Center is going to conduct, but to cover leasing out or renting out the property for various activities?
Correct.
Okay, so some of the things you list in here, for example, professional meetings? Counseling groups? I don't think you need private gatherings? Celebration of a life? Why would you need an entertainment license for those activities?
You probably wouldn't, but it's just, I'm giving you an overview, a broad overview of what we rent out for. So basically.
I mean, dancing, you clearly would, right? Band rehearsals, I suppose so.
Band, yep.
Movies, you would. Okay, you want to say anything else?
Yeah, so basically, we would rent out from before, programming hours. So if anybody wanted to come in to do a, in the past, we've had Zumba come in, and they would rent out from 7:00 to, say, 8:00 in the morning so people could go to work afterwards. They play music. So and then in the evenings, the dances and stuff like that that are going on.
Okay.
So we're not looking for anything off the wall or anything out of the ordinary.
All right. Anybody in the public interested in this, want to comment either way? No? Okay, I'll go to the board then. Mark, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Diane, when these, this may predate you, I'm not sure, but when the activities were held in the Senior Center, was there somebody that was designated as an oversight person?
No. And we've never, I mean, I can only speak to probably the 10, the past 10 years, we haven't had any problems with rentals. So.
I guess my concern would be, you know, if there's some kind of a music activity, is there somebody there to ensure that the music stays within the envelope of the building?
Not, no. We don't, we usually don't have a staff person on site.
Okay. Do you know, when you had these activities in the past, were you present when this was actually going on? Was this during your tenure?
10 years of it, I mean, eight years of it was my tenure.
Any issues as far as the community around the Senior Center in terms of complaints with noise?
No, not that I know of. Then, I mean, we had one concert within that timeframe. We came to the Board of Selectmen to get approval for that and an entertainment license, and that was not, I mean, I would say that was the loudest it's ever been, and we didn't have any complaints.
Yeah, that's my concern, is you're right there in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
And so with that concert, they had large, a large amplification system. It didn't, nobody complained, like, nobody complained about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No questions at this time, thanks.
No questions.
How many musical events have you had in the last year? By that, I don't mean dance classes, I mean like live musical performances?
Yeah, so we, generally, we have the Cape Cod Orchestra. They come in and do two, usually two concerts a year. So the Brewster Band, they come in and they do band practice.
Do you have any other musical events other than the orchestra?
No, we have dances, though. So we have Cape Cod Ballroom Dance, we've had Cape Cod Tango.
What are the hours typically of the dances? When do they start and when do they end?
They typically would be 7:00 to 11:00, and given them, allowing them an hour to clean up.
Has this been run down? Wait a minute, strike that. Okay, do you have any events that have food?
Yes, we do.
All right, can you give, can you tell me like what examples of what kind of events involve food and how many events you had that involved food?
Yeah, so when we have the Cape Cod Ballroom Dance, they might bring in cheese and crackers or fruit, fruit trays. We have one on.
Who brings the food? They do?
They do.
The people that are putting on the event?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
We have a, coming up, we have some, something that's going to have a potluck supper type of thing, so they, they're each going to bring their own.
We have a comment from the Health Department. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but it says, "Any events that offer food, you have to notify the Health Department two weeks prior." Okay, and I think you know, but I'll just say it to make sure there's no misunderstandings. We have jurisdiction over the licensing only, so anything that has to do with food is the Board of Health, public safety is the Fire Department, things like that. That was their comment. Do you ever have events where they exceed 100 people?
Yes, we do. We have the D Y newcomers, for example. They usually might have 250.
And what event would that be?
The D Y newcomers. It's a, I'd like a group to welcome people into the community.
Okay. They have regulations of nightclub use where there's 100 or more people. Are you familiar with those?
I read that they want to put on a manager for the event.
Right. It's not that they want, you have to have one. There's a state law about that. But I think that deals with, let me see what it says, hold on a minute. It talks about activation of a fire protection system element that automatically causes immediate illumination and full activation of all other house lighting and automatic stopping of any and all sounds and visual distractions as part of a fire protection system element. That's, is that being installed, did you say?
My understanding is that quotes have been received, and they're scheduling it to be installed, and what, before that's installed, it limits the occupancy for how big an event can be, and it would open it up to over 50 when that's installed.
Okay, so you want to look at those requirements and deal with the Fire Department on those? And then it says, "A nightclub, dance hall, discotheque, or bar with an occupant load of 100 or more shall be, shall have a minimum of one trained crowd manager, a minimum." And they have to be trained. Where the occupant load exceeds 250, additional crowd trained managers will be provided at a ratio of one manager for every 250 occupants. So... In any event, Kevin Huck signed off on this on January 11th with the various requirements that you'd have to meet to satisfy that department. And then the Building Department made comments, too. Says, "Each event will require a review after submission of a use of town property application. Floor plans will be required for each application indicating the seating plan." So there's a lot to, there's a lot of responsibility that attaches to these kind of events, and they are detailed in the comments that are attached to this application, which I think you have, right?
Yep, I have that.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Do we have a motion on this?
Close the public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Motion to close.
We have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, do we have a motion on the request?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
My only concern is that 12:00 midnight, but I guess I'm willing to go along with it and hope that we don't have issues. You said the music normally stops around 11:00.
11:00.
Would you be comfortable with it going just till 11:00?
Yeah, so what it is, is basically giving the rental enough time to clean up, break down, and restore the room to what it was when they came in.
Yeah, that's not a problem, though. It's just the entertainment actually ceasing at 11:00 versus, you know, the cleanup is fine. And you could always come back, but would that be okay to maybe limit it to 11:00 to see how that goes?
Certainly.
How do other board members feel about that? My only concern is it's right smack dab in the middle of a residential area.
I, I think that's reasonable. Mark, what do you think?
No, I would agree. I mean, it's, I can't recall us getting this broad an entertainment license application, at least during my tenure serving on the board. So we have, it's almost, I don't want to call it like a blank check, but it's a pretty much a fairly broad grant. And I will admit, I have some reservations because of the precedent establishes in terms of the use of other town property, other town facilities. I would feel a lot more comfortable if I knew that someone was going to be on site to manage the premises. That would certainly make me feel a lot better. The absence of that is certainly a concern, so, I mean, I'll support this, but I'm, I wouldn't be surprised if we end up having to revisit this because it is in a neighborhood, there are people living close by, and it may be through no fault of your own, but someone uses it, and they may, you know, they may abuse it, and then we might have a lot of angry neighbors, and we certainly don't want that. But clearly, what you're trying to do is have enough activities to generate a revenue stream for some of the groups. The Friends Group, I'm assuming, would be actively involved in helping facilitate some of this, right?
Not necessarily. This goes into the general fund.
So this would money that would be accrued to the town?
To the town.
So now, is there a schedule? I see the fees. I see the fees that are in the application. Are there any additional revenues other than what's been cited here in the application?
No.
No? So, if someone wanted to use, let's say, I want, I have, I'm in charge of a civic group, and I want to use the senior center on, let's say, on a Saturday night and have some kind of bingo or something like that, what would the charge be?
Okay, so it would be, depending on the room that they were renting, it would be $25 or $40, $40 for the entire ballroom. But however, there is one thing that I have to say. They, they need a certificate of liability insurance. So, we cannot rent with a, to the average person any longer.
I see. Now, who's responsible for cleaning it up? Once I'm done?
The rental is, the rental-
Rental is, so, but there's no holdback or any assurance other than?
Yeah, we get a $250 security deposit.
I see. So, that's part of the arrangement?
In addition to their rental fee, and then we return it come the following Monday.
Yeah, does this all fall on your shoulders to make sure that these arrangements are all followed? Does this become part of your job?
It's Nicole's job now.
So, so I'm just trying to figure out if it's gonna get the angry calls, if there are any, and what happened. Okay, so you'll be dealing with it. No, I think, listen, we all want to make sure that there's a lot of activity going on at the, at the senior center. It's a vital facility, it gets a lot of use, and if somehow we've restricted it to the absence of any kind of licensing, then obviously we want to be helpful. It's just making sure that there's just adequate control, adequate supervision. If there's a problem, people know who to call and how to take care of it. And like I said, it's a fairly blanket, but I think in the case of the organization that's asking for it, I think, you know, I feel much more comfortable knowing that you two are sort of supervising it and are on top of it, so. But those are my concerns. I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Let me ask you this question. Is, aside from musical events, are there any activities that are likely to extend until 12:00?
No.
So, without piecemealing this, if the, if the entertainment license were limited to 11:00, that doesn't mean people can't stay there and clean up until 12:00, but the entertainment license was limited to 11:00, can you live with that?
I can live with that.
That saves piecemealing it and say, "No music after 11:00." The entertainment would, no matter what form it was, would have to cease at 11:00. Because I guess you don't have an issue, you don't, in fact, have activities that extend beyond 11:00, correct?
Correct.
All right.
So, I'd make my motion, amend my motion to 11:00 P.M.
Okay.
Second on that.
We have a second on that, all right. And before we vote on this, there's, Dorcas, do you have anything else?
No.
Peter?
No, nothing else.
All right, okay. So, the motion is to grant the application subject to the conditions that are imposed by other town boards, including Fire and Health and Building, from 7:00 A.M. until 11:00 P.M. on both licenses, the Sunday license and the weekday license. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, the next hearing is new annual all-alcohol restaurant license. I hope I pronounced this right. Osteria Moda LLC DBA Leonessa.
That's correct, that's correct.
43 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port, Massachusetts. Do you want to introduce yourselves for the record, please?
My name is Eugene Curry. I represent Osteria Moda LLC. I'm here with Diego Moda and Taylor Amara, who are the principals of the LLC.
Thank you.
My name is Diego Moda. I am the executive chef and co-owner.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Taylor Amara. I am the owner and general manager.
Thank you. I'll read the notice into the record. You've seen the drill, and then we'll have you make a brief presentation. We'll go to the public and back to the board. County Yarmouth Board of Selectmen Liquor Licensing Hearing. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual all-alcohol restaurant license from Osteria Moda LLC DBA Leonessa, 43 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port, Mass. Taylor Amara, manager. The premise is a two-story building with five dining areas, a bar, a kitchen, and restrooms. There are two entrances and four exits, 1,782 square feet. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 7, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 P.M. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 P.M. Friday, February 3, 2023, in the selectmen's office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So, can you, to start with, in your presentation, identify exactly where this property is? Because I want to avoid any confusion as to which property we're talking about here.
Sure, so this, this property is 43 Route 6A. Previously, it was Grill 43. A lot of you may remember it as a bici some years ago.
Yep.
It's been a restaurant for a very long time.
Okay, thank you.
Diego and Taylor essentially plan to have a regional Italian restaurant called Leonessa. The footprint of the building is the same. The seating is the same as the previous license, 96 seats. They're really not changing anything about the parking or the layout of the facility. I hope that you will agree that approval is consistent with the community need and the character and fitness of the applicants. Both Diego and Taylor have extensive experience in the industry. Diego was previously the head chef at the Federal Restaurant in Boston. Taylor, who is going to be the manager, the onsite manager of the facility, has significant management experience at the Chatham Bars Inn, at the Seaport Hotel in Boston, Vieira on Main Street in Chatham. These are people that know what they're doing. Taylor has the certificate. They've met with the Yarmouth Police. They understand the requirements of the town and the state regarding alcohol service. I'd like to ask Taylor to talk to you a little bit about her plan, a little more detail about their plan for the actual restaurant.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you so much for taking the time tonight to listen to us. So, we're very excited to be doing our own venture this time, as Diego and I have been managers for others for a very long time, and now we finally have our dream come true where we aren't going to be owning and operating our own restaurant. So, Leonessa is a regional Italian cuisine. It's gonna be a regional Italian restaurant with all authentic regional cuisine, in addition to Mediterranean, and we like to say it's Italian without borders. Diego can actually describe it a little bit better, but we're not going to be an Italian-American per se, as Italy has so many different regions, and from the north all the way down to the south, and so many different types of, you know, pastas per se, the way they prepare things, it's all very, very unique to that sense. So, we want to give Cape Cod that experience as well, because there's a lot of Italian restaurants on Cape Cod, but they're more spaghetti meatballs, Italian-American. We don't want to do something completely different.
So, this is gonna be authentic?
Authentic Italian, and Diego-
I saw that in the paper.
Yeah, so Diego, being the chef, he's gonna make everything handmade. He's very, very talented. Nothing's gonna come from frozen bags or anything, so he's making bread in-house, pastas in-house. He's very excited to be doing this, so.
So, I've been honing my skills for 18 years now. I've worked for some of Boston's best restaurants. Had Lydia Shire as a mentor from Scampo, Biba, back in the day. She's regarded as one of the, one of the godmothers of the Boston restaurant scene. She worked very closely with Julia Child, and I was lucky enough early on in my career to have worked with her, paid my dues, and worked with some of her other great chefs. And what we're doing is gonna be scratch-made, all pastas, breads, stocks, soups, sauces, dressings, pastries. We're gonna be casual, upscale. We're not gonna be expensive, but we're not gonna be giving away for free as well, because we do have to make a profit. But we're trying to bring a little bit of that upscale class to a dining scene that we feel like the space deserves and it needs.
Yeah, and we want to pay homage to the locals. So, myself, growing up on Cape Cod, I grew up in Chatham. My own parents owned and operated their own restaurant. It was Amara's Italian bakery and specialty shop. It wasn't a sit-down restaurant per se, but I did grow up in it. And we struggled to try to find a place where you can go out and afford to eat, like, as a local. So, that's, pays homage to my heart. We really want to price it right to make sure that the local community, the year-rounders, can come and enjoy a night out, so.
You don't tell people you grew up on Cape Cod, though. If you're talking about an authentic Italian, you're telling me you grew up in Napoli or someplace like that, you know?
Exactly. Well, my dad is Sicilian, so.
Well, Sicilian and Italian are different. Most Italians don't consider Sicilians Italians.
I know, that is very true.
That's a fact. Okay, anything else?
Do you have any questions for us?
All right, let's go, let's see what, if there's anybody out in the public. Now, I just want to make sure people understand, so we have some confusion. This is the previous Grill 43, and it's located at 43 Route 6A. That's the property we're talking about. It's a, gonna be a new business, authentic Italian food. You notice I'm listening, right? I have reviewed the paperwork. Everything seems to be in order. I note that you're not looking for a pledge of the license. At least, the application doesn't.
Well, there is a lien on the assets from Cape Cod 5.
Yeah, but I don't think it's, it applied to the license, did it?
That's correct.
Huh?
That's correct, it does not apply.
Okay. So, no, I saw that there was a lien on the business, clearly. And were you informed by Sergeant Hennessy that there's a alcohol seminar every year that you have to attend once every two years, and new businesses have to do it the first year? So, you, if, you should make sure that our licensing department has your contact info. Usually, people give email addresses as to when these classes are. They're very good. Sergeant Hennessy is kind of in a transitional phase. Most of the time, the seminars have been put on by Phil Magnusson, who is a retired police officer and an attorney. He's a very, very good lecturer. He really knows these alcohol laws. He may be involved. We'll have to see how that goes. But I attend them myself. They're, they're very informative, and the whole approach is to avoid problems, basically, and so businesses don't get in trouble with violations of various rules and regulations locally as well as state laws and stuff like that. There's a really good program. The Yarmouth Restaurant Association, if you barged to that, if you join that, also has a seminar that they put on in late June usually, and it's geared to servers. And it educates them as to what the do's and don'ts are of the business and potential liability, civilly, criminally. They go over everything, how to detect fake IDs, all that stuff. It's a very good program, so you might want to consider that. No one in the public? Let's go to the board. Oh, we have a, do you have some comments, sir?
Hi, Greg Bullseye can just pick gifts. Some of the neighbor, some Etona butter, supporting your project. Welcome to the neighborhood. I have a big parking lot up top next to you. If you need additional parking, please feel free to come by and let us know.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we have a supporter here. He must like Italian food. Anyone else? No, okay. Mark?
I don't have any questions, but all the pressure's on you, Diego, I see.
It's okay, it's okay.
Yeah, you seem like you're ready for-
Eager and ready to deliver on that.
No, I don't have, I just want to wish you all the best and all the best of luck in the world. It sounds very exciting. It's always a challenge getting off like this and starting a new business, but we're very excited. I'm excited.
Thank you very much.
And wish you a lot of luck, so, thank you.
And Mark likes to eat, too.
I do, yes.
When is opening?
We're hoping to open in April, depending on the liquor license. We just need to, you know, judge it based off of when that passes, and then hopefully April 15th, knock on wood, will be open.
Very excited to have you in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorcas?
Very excited to have you in town. I'm ready to put my order in from your menu. I will definitely come visit. Now, congratulations. We look forward to it. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Peter?
It's been a restaurant for at least 80 years, and I remember it as the Cranberry Goose when I worked there in college. Right. Ned Fiorenza, for anybody who remembers. Wish you luck. I like, I like your menu, and I'll be there. Congratulations, and I, you know, fully support it.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Do you have other questions?
Do we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Did you, did they return the cards?
Yes.
You have those? Okay. Do I have a motion to grant the license?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? So, that passes unanimously? And thank you, Attorney Carey. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
We'll be seeing you.
Hope to have you all in.
We will.
For sure. Only because you're authentic.
Promise you good food.
Okay.
Thank you, Dakota. Good job.
6:45, yes, it is. CPC update is next. Oh, there was some stuff that we got emailed to us today. Was that here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I'm trying to think where I put it. Here it is, right here, right? Yeah, here it is. Okay, good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to meet, to discuss the Community Preservation Committee's efforts over the past year, and to review the CPA articles for the upcoming annual town meeting. I'm Christine Marzighliano, Vice Chair, and with us here tonight is George Slammer, Yarmouth Historical Commission Representative, and Joanne Crowley, Planning Board Representative. Also joining us on Zoom are Paul Huggins, Conservation Commission Representative, and Lee Hamilton, Community Housing Committee Representative. The committee also includes Debbie Clark from the Recreation Commission, Mary Ann Walsh, Yarmouth Housing Authority Representative, and of course, our Chair, Gary Ellis. And some of our application, applicants are here tonight, should you have any questions later on. Sadly, in 2022, the committee lost Tom Kelly, longtime friend, colleague, and dedicated town volunteer, who passed away on October 8. Tom served on the CPC Committee since 2008. His knowledge, critical thinking, and humor will sorely be missed. I would also like to recognize our town staff who support us, Dawn Marie Flitt- I would also like to recognize our town staff who support us, Dawn Marie Flett, CPC Program Coordinator, and Karen Green, Community Development Director. Created by statute in two thousand, Yarmouth adopted the Community Preservation Act in two thousand and five. Funding for CPA comes from a three percent local property tax surcharge and state matching funds, which are awarded on a formulaic basis. In two thousand and twenty-one, in concert with the town's wastewater efforts, Yarmouth adopted an exemption on the first hundred thousand dollars of property. Not all projects are eligible for CPA funding. The chart shown here, produced by the CPC Coalition, illustrates the types of activities which are eligible. This has changed over time with modifications in October twenty twelve to permit additional recreational projects, for instance, to allow for the rehabilitation of existing outdoor recreational facilities. Over time, the town has awarded one hundred and sixty-six CPA projects and a total of thirty-five point nine, for a total of thirty-five point nine million dollars. As you can see from the pie chart on the screen, the town has been successful in distributing funding across all categories of spending. Information on approved and pending projects is available online. Now, Karen will go across on some of the funding.
So I just wanted to explain briefly kind of how we come to have the funds that we have on hand going into the application season. We have, of course, twenty-three, FY twenty-three balances that we carry forward, but we also project out for FY twenty-four what the revenues will be. Basically, the math is pretty simple. We take the tax levy figure, which is an estimated sixty-nine million dollars. The CPC, CPA surcharge is three percent of that, less five hundred thousand dollars, which is about, in general, what that one hundred thousand dollar exemption is equal to. We budget for a twenty percent state match, which for the next year is about three hundred thousand dollars, and that's our total for the year coming forward, one point nine million dollars. The three categories of spending, there's four categories that you can spend CPC funding on. Three of the four have a dedicated set aside, if you will. So open space, historical, and affordable housing have set asides. Recreation does not have its own set aside. But the CPC budgets, the ten percent, you know, right up front, and then there's a five percent administration that we're allowed to set aside. That covers some wages. It covers some professional expenses if we have things like appraisals we want to do or we've done it, we've used the funding for twenty-one E-type things in the past associated with land acquisitions. So if we add up the estimated FY twenty-three balances with our anticipated receipts for FY twenty-four, we have a very healthy balance that's available of six point four million dollars. That's the total number. Just to explain how you can spend the money, what we set aside for historic needs to be used on historic. What we set aside for open space needs to be spent on open space. Same goes for affordable housing. The undesignated bucket or funding reserve can be used on any of the four allowable expenses. I'll stay there for a second while Christine goes over the applications that came in this year.
We received twelve new applications for consideration in the fiscal year twenty-four grant round, with two applications for Recreation Plan and Driftwood Lane. The committee met on almost a weekly basis to review applications, holding interviews with all the applicants. Based on this work, ten projects are being recommended. I would like to compliment my fellow committee members on their thoughtful and diligent review of all the applications. In all cases, each application was reviewed on its own merits, and applicants were expected to identify matching funds, including CPA funds from other towns where appropriate. As in the past, we have a housekeeping article and have bundled projects by category of spending. I'll now run through the articles.
In your packets, I think you should have copies of the draft warrant articles.
Blue stripe on top.
I just want, one caveat, they're very draft. We've sent them to Town Council for review. I don't expect kind of substantial comments, and then Bob is taking care of running the bonding article through Bond Council.
The first CPA article is a required housekeeping article that appears at every town meeting. As required under the Community Preservation Act, a minimum of ten percent of CPA revenues must be set aside for each of the following purposes: community housing, historic preservation, and open space. Additionally, five percent of the total revenue is set aside for operating expenses. These figures are based on projected revenues. There are four affordable housing articles, including one that amends a previously approved article but which does not appropriate additional funds. The Affordable Housing Trust General Deposit would appropriate CPA funds to the Yarmouth Municipal Affordable Housing Trust to create, preserve, and support affordable housing at or below eighty percent of the area median income. The Affordable Housing Trust uses these funds to support various home ownership and rental housing efforts, including the acquisition and rehabilitation, as well as supporting efforts of private developers of affordable housing. Forward the Rock Phase Two Construction would provide funding to friends or relatives with autism and related disabilities. Forward, for construction of eight one-bedroom apartments in Dennis for developmentally-disabled Cape Cod residents. Residents are selected from across the Cape, and funding from multiple CPA programs is anticipated. Yarmouth previously funded construction of a group home on this same site. Note, this project is very much a regional project, with funding being sought from other Cape towns, including Bonstable, Brewster, Harwich, Orleans, and Sandwich CPCs. Heck Help would provide one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in CPA funds for community housing projects to the Harwich Ecumenical Council for housing to preserve homes for income-eligible residents, for repairs to their homes to ensure decent, safe, warm, and healthy housing conditions. Repairs include items such as new roofs, windows, siding to ensure watertightness, and upgrades to heating, plumbing, and electrical systems. Lastly, the Buy Down Program Amendment would revise a two thousand and twenty-one vote to revise the scope of work to include production of rental units as well as homeownership. The Taylorbury Farm would provide four hundred thousand dollars to fund Phase Two of the Taylorbury Farm barn rehabilitation, including shingles, trim, windows, doors, lighting, interior finishes, electric, plumbing, and septic. Fifty thousand dollars was approved for design and engineering at a special town meeting on November fifteenth of twenty-two. Work is ongoing, and bids for Phase Two work is expected by April town meeting. Yarmouth Port Library Improvements would provide a hundred thousand dollars to replace the Hy-Vac, the gutters, and to re-point the bricks on the Yarmouth Port Library, which is built in eighteen seventy. The library is an independent, privately-funded, public library and open to all twenty-five hours a week. The Friends Meeting House Restoration would provide two hundred and sixty-four thousand one eighty-eight to the Yarmouth Friends to restore the eighteen oh nine meeting house on North Main Street. The project will include foundation work, restoration of doors, windows, and siding, a new handicap ramp, and mechanical upgrades. There has been no major structural work performed on the building since it was built, making it one of the earliest unaltered structures built in South Yarmouth. Friends of Bass River Upper Bass River Watershed Preservation Project would provide a hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred dollars to the Friends of Bass River for an Upper Bass River Watershed Restoration Project, which seeks to improve the water quality in Bass River by improving flushing. Funding will be used for preliminary bridge design for Weir Road, as well as wetland restoration, design, and permitting. The YD Red Sox have asked for, would provide a hundred thousand dollars to the YD Red Sox to install safety netting along the sidelines of Red Wilson Field at DY High School. This project was not fully funded, with the CPC requesting the Red Sox to also apply to Dennis CPC. Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk Loop, and Event Space Infrastructure. With permitting well underway, the town, in collaboration with the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, requested a total of six million dollars for construction of the Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk Loop, and Event Space Infrastructure at six sixty-nine Route Twenty-eight, and portion of the Unnumbered Lot to the south. This application was comprised of two requests. The first seeking three million dollars from existing funds, the other three million dollars in a bond authorization. While the town has been successful in securing five hundred thousand dollars in free cash funds, as well as grant funding for this project from a variety of sources, the CPA funding is necessary to bridge the gap created by increased construction and engineering costs, the addition of the Event Space Infrastructure, and higher-than-anticipated costs associated with the construction of the building of the public restrooms. Understanding the impact of bonding on future available funds was of the utmost importance to the CPC. Community development staff, working with the Finance Department and Bond Council, were able to develop a projection that was helpful to the CPC members. Bonding of CPA funds, while unprecedented in Yarmouth, has been successfully done in other communities. And I'll ask Karen now to explain the bonding revenues.
And I'll do my best. Like Christine said, we worked with Ed Santio before he was gone, who called on Bond Council to help develop some scenarios where we would be borrowing this money, what the interest rates would be, and so forth. So the purpose here being illustrative, because we don't know what the interest rates will be, and we don't know what, you know, exactly when we'll need the money, but this scenario assumes that we're going to borrow three million dollars at five percent over a span of ten years. I know it's a little hard to read. I'm going to take my glasses off so I can read it. Basically, what we did, the concern was, from the Community Preservation Committee, was that we're really spending a lot of money. This is easily the biggest project that CPC will have funded going forward. And what's the impact on the undesignated fund, that fund that can be used for all the different categories over time? Because there's a lot of good projects that the committee's not aware of, that come up from time to time, and they understand it's got to be a balance, because there's a big project, the Riverwalk Park, that needs funding, but we want to make sure we have enough funding on hand going forward. So we looked out over the next ten years, just doing very simple math with the tax levy. For example, I showed you at the beginning how we get to the estimated receipts for FY twenty-four. We basically use the same assumptions going forward for the next ten years. So we build the tax levy. Tax levy increases in this scenario by two and a half percent, subject to the proposition two and a half, and then we take the three percent minus five hundred thousand dollars. We estimate the twenty percent match. So we end up in FY twenty-five with, you know, estimated total revenue of one point nine seven million dollars. In FY thirty-four, that figure will be closer to two point six million dollars. We net out the five percent administration cost, and then we also take out the ten percent set asides. So out of the one point nine seven million dollars in FY twenty-five, we're setting aside a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for each of the three categories. In FY thirty-four, we're up to two hundred and sixty for each of those categories. The balance, what's left from the total revenue, less the administrative five percent, less the special reserves, is what goes into the undesignated reserve. So we go from one point three million dollars, almost, one point two eight in FY twenty-five, up to closer to one point seven million dollars for FY thirty-four. It's one point six nine six. Then we netted out the projected debt service. And this is, so we had made the assumption, three million dollars bonded over ten years at five percent. We say that payments will begin in September of twenty-four, which is part of FY twenty-five. So using the schedule that we got from Bond Council, we just, it starts out at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that first year, and it goes down to three hundred and fifteen in FY thirty-four. Total cost of three million dollars bonded is three point eight two five million dollars. So there's the additional interest cost. Looking at that undesignated balance, less the projected debt service of the bond cost, we have the undesignated balance. So we start out in the first year, in FY twenty-five, of having eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's on top of a balance that will carry forward from FY twenty-four, and that's also on top of the reserve funds that are set aside, those ten percents going forward. Over time, in FY thirty-four, because we have a bigger number for the CPA total revenue and a smaller number for the projected debt service, the amount for that undesignated balance after the debt service is up to close to one point four million dollars, one point three eight one. This bottom, this next to bottom row is just the cumulative, cumulative undesignated balance over those ten years. And so we see that over the course of time, going from FY twenty-five over to FY thirty-four, we still have ten point nine million dollars, close to eleven million dollars, available for the other projects. So it's a little bit complicated, but it's not too, too complicated. I'm happy to answer any questions folks have about it. We're putting all this information online, and we'll update it kind of as needed going forward. But I just, I wanted to kind of, this seemed to help the CPC through their discussion and their grapple with the issue of a big spending item and still having money in the bank over time.
Okay. So after much discussion, based on these factors, as well as the significant public benefit associated with the project, CPC voted to recommend this project for consideration at the annual town meeting. Note that because this project draws from existing funds and seeks bond authorization, two separate articles will be presented.
This last slide is really just a summary slide that shows the impact of the money on hand. The FY twenty-four, what we project will be available between the FY twenty-three carryover and the FY twenty-four new receipts. And it, oops, sorry about that. It goes through each of the applications, the forward, you know, just every one of the applications that Christine has reviewed, and it details out which funding reserve will be utilized to cover the costs of the articles as approved. And it shows that we will have a balance going forward at the end if everything's approved. And just note, this only reflects the on-hand request for the three million dollars out of the Riverwalk Park. This doesn't talk about the bonding article. But with this scenario, we'd still have nine hundred and ten thousand dollars in our open space reserve. But with this scenario, we'd still have $910,000 in our open space reserve. It's a healthy chunk, should we, you know, property's very expensive. If something comes available, we will hopefully have the funding on hand. And then, an additional $862,000 in our undesignated. And that's about it.
Thank you. Since we're talking about money, I'm going to go to the money guy first. Peter.
When do you expect to have your bids? I'm going to ask a whole bunch of questions. Why don't I ask the questions, and then do, I'm assuming your bonding payments are interest every six months, plus the principal?
I would have to defer to the town administrator.
Semi-annual interest payments.
Okay. What would make it a lot easier also, you should put a debt service coverage ratio at the bottom, which shows your, what you've got left over. I can show you how to do the calculation. I mean, it's real simple. It's just a simple ratio of what you've got left over versus what your debt service is, and what that ratio is. Because it's much easier to say, "We're going to have two times debt service coverage versus I got $90,000 available." What does that mean in English?
Okay. I will take the help.
Right. I can show you how to do it.
That'd be great.
Show you how to do it. It's real, it's real simple.
Thank you.
Right. And do you have, do you have the bid from the Bond Council, what it's going to cost to do the bonding?
No.
These are, these are all questions that I have, just as a normal.
While he's on bonding, is this going to be a general obligation of the town?
Yes.
I would assume, to get that rate, right? It's not going to be, even though it's going to be paid out of these revenues, it's going to be a GO obligation, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. I assumed, and I should have asked, if it were going to be a general obligation, GO obligation.
I just asked that, so you didn't think you knew everything.
Believe me, I don't know everything. Most, but not everything. No, I think it's a good, good project. So, bids, do you have any anticipation of when bids would be available?
The bidding, the...
And I'm primarily talking about the Riverway Park.
Right. No, no, no. And unfortunately, Kathy had to leave for the evening, and I know I have the answer somewhere.
I may be able to help you.
Jim, do you know the answer off the top of your head? Jim Saban is here.
Yeah, Jim Saban, Chair of the Drive-In Site Committee. It's our intent, we're at about 85, 90% design review right now, hoping to go to bid for breaking ground next September.
I don't have, I don't have any further questions. I think it's a good project, and, you know, we should go forward. And, you know, with the numbers, numbers that are presented, it looks like, A, we're going to be able to pay for it, pay for it over time, and actually, a 10-year bond, and, you know, it's a pretty aggressive payback schedule, but we still leave, leave money available to do, do other projects, project for the town. And, you know, it's, it's extremely important that, you know, the projects that have been done in the past, and I know there's going to be more projects coming up in the future.
I think it looks very good. I just want to speak actually to Community Preservation to thank you all for your service. I know how hard and dedicated you are to what you do, and that this is only one of other committees that you're on. And you always are thinking about the people of the town, and how it's, what it's going to cost them, and what the benefit is. And I thank you very much for all of you and what you have done.
Thank you, Dorcas, for all your years that you served on CPA.
Thank you, Dorcas. Dan?
I second Dorcas's comments. You guys do wonderful work. This is a feel-good committee, though, isn't it? You guys are doing all those projects that people want, but would never be able to fund otherwise. And it's just such a wonderful program. And I'm looking at the summary here, and the work that you've done over the life of this act has just been tremendous. The historical preservation that we've been able to accomplish, the open space, it's really been something. And I wanted to ask you, first of all, thank you for the summary. This is really nice to have this. Is this available for the public as well?
We're going to put it online.
Okay. That's great. Because it really does show what a wonderful effort you're making of spreading the money around, and trying to hit as many projects as you can. And really, you can't drive 100 yards in town without hitting one of them.
166 projects on that list.
It's really, it's, it really is amazing. I don't think I have, I really don't have any questions. The projects you're bringing forth this year are just another example of just great work and great projects coming forward in the town. I'm really pleased that we can fund these through this mechanism, because, like I said, we just never would otherwise. And some of this stuff just has to be done. This historical preservation has to be done. And like the Meeting House, what a jewel that is in our town.
It's a gem.
Yeah, it really is. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. Mark?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I would say this has probably been one of the more challenging years for this committee, at least as far as I can remember. And, and I know the Drive-In Site was particularly challenging. And I know, I've been in your meetings, and I've listened to the discussions, and I know this was a tough one to move forward on, but I think you did the right thing. I think you've made the right recommendations. I think there's a, overall, this is a good plan. And I think, I think clearly, the record of accomplishments that you see reflected in this program for this year, it's quite significant. You've done a great job. And I too, join with my colleagues in thanking you all for the, for the work that you put into this. This is an enormous amount of work. And, you know, a special thanks to Gary Ellis, the Chair. Gary works a lot of hours that you just don't see. He puts a lot of time and energy and effort into it. So, Gary, wherever you are...
Gary is enjoying his birthday with his grandchildren tonight.
So, we have two birthdays today, huh? Mr. Chairman and Mr., two chairs, yes. So, while, Gary, happy birthday, and thanks for all your, all your good work on behalf of the town and the committee. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I had, well, first of all, I wanted to ask Bob a question. On that 5%, that's just kind of an estimated number?
Estimated, it's much higher than we've seen in, in previous years. It's a very conservative estimate, so...
May come in lower?
We're hoping.
All right. The other question I had is more one of curiosity. Have we ever, out of CPC funds, bonded a project before? I don't recall ever having done that before.
No. I have not.
I don't have any problem with it. I'm just, yeah, I didn't think we, I didn't think we had. I want to thank you as well for all the great work that you do, both in terms of the current warrant articles that are going to be coming up, and also the past accomplishments. And you bid off some really challenging ones with the Riverwalk Park. I'm glad to see that we're finally getting to the point of completing that and getting the necessary funding in place. The legislation that enabled CPC initially was limited to passive uses, like just acquiring properties, that you couldn't devote those monies or dedicate those monies to structures initially. And by, by there being that amendment that allows you to do so, it's really, I think, probably across the Commonwealth, but particularly in Yarmouth, allows us to preserve the historical sites that we have, and the amenities that we have in town, keep this rural community with preserving open space, providing support for recreation. And it allows the town to coalesce, to have a lot of different departments come together and work together as a community, which I think is a great thing. You know, oftentimes, we're fractured or segmented in our, in our views and looking at things, but this is like a collective experience of bringing a lot of town talent together, and seeing what we can do to enhance the community at large. And I think that's one of the wonderful things about CPC, and one of the wonderful things about the committee, and the work that they do, and the staff support that they get. So, I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done. And the Quaker site that's being renovated, I'm glad, I must go by that thing seriously about 50 times a week, because I live off of North Main Street, so I come down and I go back. And it's very quaint, and it's very historical, it's very much of old Cape Cod, really, and it's, it's a great, I'm really happy to see that there's going to be some funds expended to preserve that historical site, which I think you said dates back to, what, 1807? Something like that. That's, that's a few haircuts ago, so. Thank you very much for all your work. And I'm glad to see that, even though Purdue lost Indiana, they're, they're still ranked number, they're still ranked, they're still ranked one.
They're still number one.
Okay. Thank you. Got to watch out for those Hoosiers.
Now, put it right there.
We are now... Going to the Capital Improvement Plan, I guess, is next. Try to get some of this out of here.
This is the last one, though. This is final, yes. Yeah. We saw his email.
Let that off, normally 10 minutes off schedule. That's, that's pretty rare. I know our luck won't, I know our luck will hold, it never does, but we're going to try to give it a shot.
All right. So, how does this work? It goes forward. I think it's up, goes forward? Oh, it's right, right left.
Lost Bill. There's Bill. We've elevated Mr. Scott to analyst status.
Hello, Bill. How are you? We're good. How you doing?
Uh, better. Little beard growth, while I'm recuperating.
It's not coming in black, Bill.
No, I know that. I was hoping, but...
Okay. We are ready to proceed to the community, excuse me, the Capital Improvement Plan Report. Good evening, ladies.
Hi there. So, we want to start tonight just by saying thank you to our Capital Budget Committee members. I'm Judy Tarver, and I was the Chair this year, because Sandy foisted the hat over onto my head. But rather than thinking of her as the Vice Chair, she really has been a co-chair, and is very active. Our other members, our at-large members, include Lindsay Pietro, Kathy Hislop, and Kurt Sears. And then we have a Planning Board Representative Member, Will Rubenstein. And our FinCom Representative Member is George Perkins. And this is a hard-working group who pays attentions to a lot of details. From the town, we had Bill, and behind-the-scenes, Mary Alice. So, we had a lot of support from, from the town staff. And in the course of our process, we meet with people all over the town, and of course, they've been very cooperative, and just very generous with their time and information in answering our questions. So, here's our report for tonight. So, the purpose here is just to go over, you actually saw the handoff in December, but then new school information was received, so that has been incorporated. And we're providing an overview of our document and discussion of the recommendation. So, you did get, could you just hold that one? Yeah. So, you got this one in your packet, and this is the very detailed one that has all the projects outlined on it. Okay. So, this is our charge, is to review all requests for capital items and make recommendations to the Finance Committee, to you as the Board of Selectment, and ultimately, to Town Meeting. Capital item is defined for us as something that has a minimum value of $10,000, or a useful life of at least five years. So, examples of capital items include buildings, vehicles, computer equipment, roadway, sidewalk, waterway, construction costs. So, big-ticket items. The committee's recommendations take the form of a five-year capital improvement plan and a 10-year facility plan. And those are to serve as the town's overarching planning documents. So, they should be living documents. Each year, these items are budgeted for, and then are presented to Town Meeting as the capital budget. The capital budget is separate from the town's operating budget, which funds recurring expenses like salaries, employee benefits, and office expenses. So, this year, some of the biggest news from our group was how we changed things. And Bill introduced us to a cloud-based system, and this allowed for entry, rating, and management of the projects. The departments then entered their information and their supporting documents into an online capital improvement portal, which I believe you have access to. So, if you go in to look at a project sheet, you can actually then go up to different tabs, and you can see the support documents, the financials, or there might be site plans, or pictures of decaying equipment, but other supporting documents are there. So, the town administrator, thank you, Bob, reviewed the projects and sent the recommendations to us via the portal. So, we had a filtering system that happened before we got them. Then the system allows a more rapid movement of this process. So, we can exchange information more quickly, it can be updated ongoing, and that helps. Significant this year was what happened with the fall town meeting articles, because they were entered as they were moving toward that town meeting date. So, in other words, we start meeting end of August, September, thinking about our presentation for May Annual Town Meeting, but meanwhile, there were projects coming for fall town meeting. And this helped us kind of track them, separate them, and get everything in the right queue. So, the, now, the system will hold those projects that had been bypassed, kind of in our past capital years. So, it sorted it out for us. There was a learning curve, but it was helpful. Okay. So, this was how we proceeded. The CBC can access what the departments entered, and what was forwarded by the town administrator. And then we can actually stick comments in, so we can communicate across to each other, you know, at midnight or whenever, and say, gee, what was the situation on this one? Or do we have detail for that? So, that was a different way for us to communicate. We also continued our liaison approach, where we appoint members from our committee to work with the different department heads and division heads. And then we reach out, we go and visit, we tour the sites, we listen to their concerns, their presentations. We kind of ask them questions, so they're better prepared when they come to see the whole group, the whole committee, and we get some better feel for what the actual projects are. The CBC then requested each department to come and appear, and they reviewed their, their fall town meeting for 2023, and their annual town meeting 2024 proposed projects. So, they had a lot to do, and those meetings were pretty packed with info. The meetings were helpful, and we combined them with that liaison approach, so that that helps us with our eventual rating. So, you've seen rating systems from us before, and they kind of went 1 to 4, one year 1 to 5, A, B, C, D, E. This year, we used a different system, again facilitated by the software. And we have an example for that, right? Okay. So, this is, there were two categories, and they were weighted. So, we looked at projects... So we looked at projects based on their significance and their readiness. And the significance was rated at 70% and readiness at 30%. For each of these, there were specific criteria available, and you didn't have to give the same score, so they could be mixed and matched. So the four groups were essential, that's the one we're going to show you tonight, desirable, acceptable, and then deferrable. So on the next slide, this is how detailed the essential one was. So this significance of an essential project would be that the projects are required to complete or renovate a major public improvement, projects that will remedy a condition dangerous to health, safety, and welfare of the public, like our PIFAs, or projects which will provide facilities for a critically needed community program. Also, projects that are in response to a state or federal mandate, and ones that have available other sources of funding which will not be available at a future date. So in other words, well, we got the money now, so that money might go away. So that has to do with the significance of the project. Moving over to the readiness, which has a 30% of the weight, the project clearly and specifically depicts by virtue of plans, studies, cost estimates, and other sufficiently detailed documentation that it's ready to proceed, given its scheduled placement in the plan. So this is, we're ready, we're good to go. The project is an integral part of a larger, long-range program or plan whereby this project and other related projects are clearly and specifically integrated, coordinated, and prioritized. So this is a high bar to reach, this number four. And then, we won't drag you through the rest of them, they're in your materials for the So here we have one of those eye strain charts. This is funding sources for our 10-year plan. What, the big takeaway from this slide, though, is to just notice how heavily populated the beginning years are, the first five years, and then how that kind of falls off for the last five years. And what we would like to have is to have that more thoroughly populated throughout. So now we'll go to the next slide, and you can see there's more detail here. And here's the first five years. So the various sources of funding for our projects are on the left and going out for the full five years. I'll give you a second to look at that. And you see some blips here, and you'll see some, a little bit, some inconsistencies, certainly down at the lower end with the wastewater, you see huge entries there. And then, you know, that project has its own complex funding that's going on with it. I think that's the biggest one of note here. Anything else? Should we go on? And then, just as a comparison, this number, this 92 million, is much smaller than for the first five years. So that's just an indication that we're not planning in as detailed a way for the second five years of our 10-year plan. So that's something we're hoping the new software will help to facilitate, that departments and divisions will be able to enter their information, and we'll be able to look a little more forward. This is just another way to shape those numbers. And looking at the funding sources by 10 years, you see that huge monolith over there under wastewater. That's a huge amount of money. But now, when we go to the next slide, just to put this in perspective, if we take wastewater out, this is more the balance of what is going on in the town for funding sources. And you'll see Water Enterprise is certainly right there, now you can see it, and the general fund, you can see it, where in the previous slide, the wastewater just dwarfed everything else that we were doing. So the issues with what we've just looked at, and this is maybe related to Peter's earlier comment, is that we would like to see projects calculate the debt as part of their application process. So that way, we can actually see the actual allocation of the funding, and it's presented that way from the beginning. So not just a cost item, but how much debt are we creating with the project? And this is just what I just told you, the difference between the first and last five years. If we have projects that are moved out past the first five years and into the next, that'll start to create a good, true picture of our crucial priorities and kind of spread out the implementation. So it's not overloaded in a five-year crunch cycle, but rather, you know, my five-year cycle in my department might be working on design and engineering and then moving toward implementation. Somebody else's is starting like at year three of that 10-year cycle where they're starting implementation, but it still should be populated through, so it's just continuing. So that's kind of a message that we wanted to, or maybe an issue that we just wanted to put out there for this year. Okay, so again, we have this 10-year viewpoint, and this is by category. So not by division, but categories, you know, what are we doing with our money? There's acquisition of land and buildings, and what we're putting into our assets, what's going into buildings. So it's a different way to look at our expenditures. Again, though, you see that the first five years are more heavily populated. You see a really strong line going across at infrastructure, right down the center there, about midway. At the top, we have buildings, and you see some heavy numbers initially, and then they just kind of fall away. So a clearer picture of those kinds of things. I also wanted to just bring you down to rolling stock, which is next to the last item, and you see fluctuating numbers there also. And this has been an ongoing thing, we'll talk about this a little later, just as far as clarification of what our goals are with rolling stock. Again, here's the first five years, a clearer picture. Where are we putting our money? And then the last five years. So we want to spread out those projects and showing the projects from engineering to final construction, if they are building projects. With the rolling stock, if it's all 10 years out, it should be based on a replacement plan. So we should know which vehicles are dying. We've done a little bit better with this with going into the leasing for the police cruisers, and we're looking at leasing projects with other vehicles. That smoothes out the expenditures rather than buying something, and so then you can count on what that expenditure will be. But rolling stock has its own set of concerns. The other thing is, we want to see design and preliminary plans for buildings. We did fund this year a general HVAC repair account for emergencies, because we know the HVAC around town is very, very needy. But we really would like to see an inventory of what's going on in the buildings and what's going to be needed. Because otherwise, we're faced with these emergency repairs, and people are being called in, and we're probably not doing things in the most efficient way that we could. Again, here's a look at 10 years, and a lot of money going into infrastructure. And then, when we go forward, we take infrastructure out, and then you can see, oh, the money's going into buildings and improvements and rolling stock, and this is a little more of, you know, our day-to-day kind of thing. So here are recommendations for all the capital funds by funding source. So one of the things we want to do with funding sources is to make sure that we're getting applicable sources for every project. And we, over the last couple of years, have really put a lot of energy with Bill's guidance into identifying external funding sources for different projects. And so he's been a wealth of information, linking us with other possibilities. He likes to use the phrase, use somebody else's money. So that's always a good idea, right? And then we want to develop clear policies regarding our capital improvement plan development and the asset management, so that we can create consistency. We're finding that with administrative changes, we sometimes get different guidance, and then we think we're still operating on that idea that was presented to us maybe three years ago, and maybe the thinking has changed. So somewhere in there, the policies, whether they come from you as a board or from administration, need to be enacted and then transmitted, because we get different messages, and that makes it difficult to know what our goals are. So now we're just going to talk about some recommendations we have. So this was, we know we had a glut of free cash, which was lovely, but we don't want to be using free cash for recurring expenses like leases and debt or equipment purchases that go for three or more consecutive years. It was a nice opportunity to clean up some things, but we can't depend on that, we all know that. We want to properly fund a reserve account for items such as supplemental vehicle maintenance. Now, this was a request that we got, and we did fund it this year through free cash, but vehicle maintenance goes on. We need to change oil, we need to change tires, we need to do other major things, because we have a lot of big vehicles that need help. So we need to have an account for those kinds of things, which we don't know. And then, as a different kind of application for free cash, what we did in November with Article 12 was, free cash was part of three different funding sources for wastewater, and they kind of went together. And that was a nice way to reduce that debt and, you know, to be able to have a cushion there moving forward. So we're thinking that kind of use in the future would be a model. So for general fund, in the past, we'd been given a number of 1.5 million for capital budget. And then, what the committee did was to assess projects against that total amount that we thought we had to spend. And sometimes, we would do things like say, well, chief, instead of eight cruisers, could you go with five? And on this other recommendation, you're asking for $60,000 for a building repair, what could you do with 40? Would that get enough? So we did a little more negotiating with that. This time, we really were working with the quality of the projects, and then it kind of went back to administration. But we didn't know what ballpark we were playing in a lot of the time. So if there were some kind of a set amount for capital, and this is aside from roadway improvement, that might help this process be clearer. And then, from general fund, there was, we did fund the HVAC replacement program, even though it does lack a list of projects. But again, it would be better if we had a true assessment of our buildings, so we could create a plan, and those could be projected out over the five- and 10-year sequences. School projects are a lot of conversation with us. The CBC would like to have more discussion on the ME Small Building by your board and the select board from Dennis with the school committee, so that there was a clear plan. Because when a capital project comes to us for roof repair, which we've been seeing for years, and we don't really know if that building's going to be used, how bad it is for the children and staff in it right now, how much mold is growing, those kinds of things weigh heavily on us. But also, there's the conversation about investing in a building that may not be there or may be utilized in a very different way. So it would be really good if that kind of a plan could move forward. It's been quite a few years we've been seeing roof repair requests at ME Small. This year, our CBC completed our plan in draft, and then we had to wait for the CIP votes from Dennis for DY projects. So these are projects that would be jointly funded. And then, if a project is funded by us, but Dennis decided not to, it could end up receiving approval in Yarmouth at town meeting if it wasn't withdrawn. And that did happen last year, where we approved some trucks for the school department, and then Dennis didn't. So then, there we were, having approved this project, but we're out of sync with them often with the capital program. So we would like to see a five- and 10-year CIP from the school district, that's something that's been lacking. And again, recurring maintenance projects, we've seen this in the town, but it got presented again this year from the schools, like painting, and we're not seeing those as appropriate requests for capital improvement program, because it's general maintenance. And definitely, a project that addresses ME Small should be developed. So rolling stock. Rolling stock is, can be a really hot issue, because it comes from all different areas. Everybody has rolling stock, and concerns have been ongoing and varied. There was a big push about size of fleet at one point, quantity of vehicles requested, the features on the vehicles, the frequency of replacement, leasing opportunities. And we've even had a lot of time on color and signage. So we have a lot of topics that arise. So Bill has presented this idea of having a sheet where, you've all seen them, you know, in Consumer Reports, and it has a list of stoves down here and a list of features there. And then, if you want this stove and these features, it has a little black dot, and you pick which one you want. But to do something comparable to that, where we would have an overall chart that articulated the fleet and has identification, and we know what's going on across departments, who has what vehicle. At one point, we were told there would be no hand-me-downs of vehicles because of green communities, but I guess that was not actually a policy that was adopted, because after that guidance, which was several years ago, police vehicles are now, had been handed down to inspection services. So we need a little more clarification, and we need to get a hold of what our fleet exists across the whole town. I know Ed had done something with an asset management system, so there's some beginning of that. But when they're moving from department to department, it's hard to keep track of. All right, so it's a change of topic. So as far as parks, recreation, and facilities, currently, the senior center is moving forward with the alarms in bathrooms, you heard about that earlier. And this type of investment should be scheduled across all facilities for a unified plan. Because they got kind of caught short with that. They had somebody in to look at, for their bathroom project, and the alarm deficit was noticed. There's also $100,000 park equipment request and a Parks Recreation Master Plan moving forward from two different entities. So they're actually, these are coming to So they're actually, these are coming together. By having a master plan, then they'll be able to make better decisions for what park equipment they want and need, what's in disrepair, and what are more emergencies. And then we really recommend that a facilities analysis be conducted across all the town assets. And that's here because we kind of thought that belonged with facilities, although they're very busy. But across all the town assets, and that would create a uniform and prioritized plan for implementation. So if we know what condition our buildings are in, we'll know better, rather than having the police department say, hey, we don't have any heat here, or a sprinkler system breaks in another building, whatever happens where the facilities are, requests are coming in kind of by department and division. So the fall town meetings, you know, we haven't been having, you know, we've only had a few of those. And I guess personally, I prefer to call them special town meetings. And they've seemed to become less special. So what we're asking is, maybe for clarification on what those fall town meetings are, if they're going to be a regular part of our system to make attendance better and to spread out the conversation for projects. For capital projects, it might be helpful to have the fall one be a venue for emergencies or to facilitate more time for pre-development grants permitting, but not to come in and amend prior projects and introduce others that aren't really emergency kind of projects. So that would just be something we put before you for consideration. If we're putting effort into developing five- and 10-year capital plans, then they should be living documents that can guide how we're doing things, where the special town meeting really should be for something special in terms of a capital expense. And the last is kind of a detailed point that we kind of ran into this year, where annual town meeting and fall town meeting are really that same fiscal year. So that even though we were kind of out of sync, because we'd already started on our next fiscal year, then we were seeing the things for this fall town meeting that went on the previous fiscal year. I guess I'll leave that there. So this has been my sixth budget cycle. And every year, we continue to clarify the projects that are addressed with us. We worked through a lot of bundling of small things that really aren't capital. And there's such really significant progress with what we're doing, with what we're going to address in our work. And so that the desired outcome will be actually a refining of the town's capital improvement program to be a bona fide capital improvement program. And once again, thank you to everybody. We met, we took up time with people, with department heads, with division heads. They generously toured us around their projects and explained things in detail, brought us pictures, pointed out rusty vehicles, all kinds of things. They're very, very generous with their time in making sure that we understand their projects.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Mark?
Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to commend everybody, including Bill Scott, who's, you know, on Zoom, for just the just overall improvement in terms of the material, the presentation, the organization. For folks that might be watching, there's just an enormous amount of work that has gone in to improving the overall presentation. And clearly, what's reflected in your presentation to us, you're still trying to flush out some issues that still need to be worked out, but I'll tell you, we've come a long way.
Yeah.
And you have. And I know Bill's been the quiet one. Usually, he's the one that does all the talking, but...
Well, do we have him on mute, maybe?
I'm here, yes.
Yeah, but I know Bill's done a lot of work on this with you. And I just want to acknowledge the outstanding work of our assistant town administrator. He's done yeoman's work. And you could always tell when he's busy because that's evident in the PowerPoint. He's a guru when it comes to PowerPoints. I think in terms of a general overview, I think this has all been incredibly helpful. I don't know if you want us to delve into some of the questions now, but I think at some point, we certainly need to. And maybe we need to set up as an agenda item, maybe some of the specific questions that you've laid out for us, because I think that'll take some time. One of the questions that I have for you, I conduct office hours every month, and I have a regular group of folks from the Friends of the Council on Aging asking me if we'll be making real progress on bathroom improvements and other facility improvements in the senior center in this capital plan, particularly for this year. So I'm going to just get it out there because I've been asking them to watch our meetings and to try to participate in the process. So can you, for the folks at home that are watching, particularly Chris Marassi, who's the president of the Friends of the Yarmouth Council on Aging, and the other members, could you explain what's envisioned in the capital improvement program for this coming year?
Sandy's pulling up the project sheet now.
It is included.
But can you explain what we're looking at doing, or what's being proposed?
I believe...
Because they hear it from me, but sometimes I think they like to have it validated by other people.
And maybe Bill can explain it more. There is grant money available for the bathrooms?
Yeah, I can explain it. There was some money that, working with Ed Centio, we were able to acquire to get some of the design efforts. We need to move those forward. We're hopefully looking at spring town meeting, but we need to, we have that in the schedule. I think there's about $200,000 in there, correct me if I'm wrong, for the bathrooms. And then there's additionally, as mentioned earlier by Judy, we're looking at the alarm system, and that was brought up by the chair and Diane this evening as a result of the discussion about use of the building. So it's something that, as we look at the building and we look at bathrooms, we look at some of the alarm systems, and we look at HVAC, you start unpeeling different layers. And we want to make sure that as we do the building, that we're being very effective in combining those projects or not doing something that, we're skipping something or being redundant in the work. So right now, it's scheduled for spring town meeting. There is some money for the design, and I need to work with Diane of the senior center to move that forward, and there is some money for the alarm system.
So the funding to do the work for the bathrooms is in this capital plan and will be before town meeting this spring?
Yes.
Well, we need to get the design done because about every time we look at the building, there is some HVAC work that had to be done. Apparently, there was a cooling event at the center, and the HVAC system didn't completely work. So we want to make sure that, the difficulty in doing these buildings is you go over and do the bathroom, and then you find out there's something else, and it should have been a different project. That's really what we need to do, is figure out where all the projects are and then sequence them appropriately, you know, fire alarm, bathrooms, and things like that. I know the bathrooms have been there for a while. I know there was a design, we're looking at a different design as it relates to creating, you know, the two bathrooms and upgrading those, upgrading them for ADA, and then creating additional bathroom that is a bathroom that, you know, allows a greater ADA presence, you know, in terms of the facility. So we are looking at all those things. But again, you need to understand that there are several issues with the building that need to be addressed in a more comprehensive approach.
This is, so also, Mark, this is a very emotional issue at the senior center. We're sensitive to that. Last year, when we went, a budget cycle, when we went to look at the bathrooms, we actually ended up saying, yikes, you have a roofing, roof leak here that, you know, kind of trumped it. So that, you know, that's where this whole issue of a broad-based facility assessment will be really important because that will help to see how these things line up.
I hear a lot of words, and I hear a lot of interesting things being said, but what I'm trying to figure out is, when do we anticipate work on bathrooms being done?
Well, the design will have to be done first. That's what Bill was saying.
I get that. I understand that. So what's the projection?
Well, I mean, we have...
This is the question they're asking me. I don't think it's, I think it should, they should be able to get a pretty direct answer. When do we, the design work, when do you expect that to be finished?
Well, that, we need to get an architect and do all that to start the design work. When you start the project and then you find out you have alarm system needs, and then you start the project, and then you find out that you have HVAC needs, you need to take a look at the entire comprehensive building. I understand this has been something that's been going on for a while, but at the same time, solving it in a few months is not going to be advantageous if the, you've got brand-new bathrooms, but you've got other challenges in the building that don't let you use them to the full extent. So I have a meeting with all community services people next week to take a look at projects and its relationship to spring town meeting, libraries, senior center, golf, and so recreation. So we should know more then. And my preference in capital projects is be methodical and do the project correctly. So...
Well, let me just say, again, I don't want to belabor the point, Mr. Chairman. No one is accusing Bill Scott of not being methodical or not being organized. You've got that well-covered, Bill. I'm just trying to communicate to a group of people that show up at my office literally every month, asking for me to be able to explain clearly what work, when are the bathrooms going to be fixed at the senior center? And I'm still having difficulty giving them a straight answer. The answer, I guess, is we don't know because there are a lot, there's a lot more design work and studies that have to be done. Is that what I should be telling them?
Well, except they're going to say to you, we already had a design, because they did.
Okay, so we've already had a design, so now...
That design is not working well with the stated goals and the efficiency of the space use. So I know that the Friends had a design. I spent hours looking at it. So it exists, but it's not going to work with what the other needs are. And I think it's important for them to understand that, you know, the bathrooms are ugly and they don't all work, and we know that. I want them to know that we know, that, and we know they kind of smell funky. We know. But we also know that it's really important that that fire alarm work, and that that's, that if you had a fire here and you were in an activity, you're going to want to know that, and you're going to need to get out.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to just spend all of my time just zeroing in on this.
Bill's raising his hand. Bill, you have something to add? Yeah, I think what I'll do for Slapman Forest is I'll write up a brochure for the project and/or related projects for the senior center, and then put some dates in there and some sort of goals, similar to what we did for Maticus, so that people have a talking point, and we've refined the schedule to provide more detail with the funding sources that we have available.
Can I just make one request? Can I ask through the town administrator that you folks sit down with the Friends of the Senior Center, of the Council on Aging, and just literally explain to them? I would, I mean, again, with no disrespect, I think there needs to be some real clear explanation as to what's going on and when you anticipate the design work to be done, when you anticipate this project to go out to bid, when they can expect to get the work completed. I mean, these are not, this is not a difficult request, and they just need some clear answers. They don't need a brochure or a PowerPoint. They just need some very, very clear answers in writing to get an explanation on when this stuff is going to be done. I don't want to misrepresent what's going on. I will admit, I'm not pleased at all with what I'm hearing. These people have been literally asking and begging for years to get this work done. And this is a facility that gets used by a lot of people. Here we are talking about inviting the public in, right? People are going to be coming in for entertainment and bingo and dances and all sorts of stuff, and the bathrooms are atrocious. So I think if we're going to be opening up town facilities to the public at large and trying to, you know, do more with these facilities, I think this kind of stuff really needs to be made a priority. And I think, I urge our team to at least sit down and communicate a very clear and definitive schedule with these folks. I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I really don't. And I don't mean to belabor it, and I hate using up all my time focused on the senior center, but I promise these folks that at the meeting tonight, I would try to get some answers. And I'm really, I'm disappointed in what I'm hearing. I mean, there's a lot of good that has come out of this presentation, but I think this project has gone on way too long. And I think I understand completely why folks are frustrated.
Sure.
I'm frustrated.
They do need to know there is $200,000 allocated in this budget.
I think that's wonderful, but if it's sitting in the bank somewhere, that doesn't really get anything done. It needs, the work needs to be designed, and the project needs to be put out to bid, and the design work needs to be completed ASAP. I get it that there are other things that need to be done, but like, we just have to pace on all of this stuff. And I don't mean to be directing it all, my frustration to you folks, because you've done a great job. You have, your committee has. I'm directing, I'm directing them more to the guy on Zoom and his boss.
Well, we're citizens too, and we're frustrated that it hasn't moved on.
No, and I understand. There are a lot of things that are in the plan. The reality is that there's a lot of work that's gone into making this capital plan a much better plan. What I'm excited about with this plan is the fact that we can see the light at the end of the tunnel in terms of getting real work done for the town. I can't tell you, I've been on the board for a while, and a lot of stuff has shown up in the plan, but it just sits there, all right, including the senior center work. So I think, I'm anxious to see us start moving things, you know, into the construction phase and getting things done, making things happen, you know. And I think by having a plan that's developed like this, I think we're certainly on that path. So we have made significant progress. I'm sure there are other, there are other things I'd like to point out, but I've used up way more than my time. I really thank my colleagues for indulging me, but let's see what we can do to get the senior center taken care of.
Thanks, Mark.
Diane, you would like to comment on the bathrooms?
I'll pass on that. Thank you. Thank you so much. The other committee was a feel-good committee, this one, daunting, the detail and extensiveness of the information that you people are dealing with. The work is truly appreciated. It seems to me that we have a much better comprehensive picture of what we're dealing with. It's much more versatile. You're able to look at things in many different ways, which we weren't able to do that before. And you're able to appreciate things a lot better through this new process. So I'm very appreciative to Bill for bringing this process to the front and for your committee being so flexible and willing to engage with this whole new scheme of putting numbers on a sheet and figuring out a way to help us understand what we're dealing with in terms of capital planning. I had some questions. I'm glad that Mark talked about the idea of maybe bringing this back for an agenda item. My computer broke, so I can't even get at the questions, but I will have them ready for when we do an agenda item. Bill talked, or maybe one of you talked about a facility analysis, but we are going to do that as part of the Maticus reuse project. We're going to be doing a facility study of the entire town. So that does answer one of the questions that you were talking about. We do need to do that, and certainly it'll fit very nicely in this plan here. The ME Small issue, I mean, that shouldn't be a mystery. It really shouldn't. We just simply have to have a conversation with the school department. Granted that their focus has been on the middle school.
Yes.
But, you know, that's coming online next month, so it's time to really begin addressing the ME Small in terms of, you know, we don't want to be spending money on a roof when the building could be forfeit in five years. So really, we need some concrete information, whether that's done through the administrator... So, really, we need some concrete information, whether that's done through the administrator or a liaison from the board. We'll take care of that. We need to take care of that.
Thank you.
And just really having a better communication with the schools, period. Because so much of the facility numbers, the projects that are coming forward are going to be through the school system, and we really need to have a handle on that. Really need to be partners with the school. And, you know, we, we talk about that a lot, but the, the sense of partnership sometimes leaves a lot to be desired. So, a lot better communication really could help everybody make sure that we have enough funds to take care of the projects in a timely way. I can't, I know I had a couple of other questions. I'm going to, I'm going to cede my time at this point, but if I do get access to those, I may just give you a call and try to clarify some things from my own mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Turkish?
Well, the amount of work that you do is unbelievable, and thank you very much. I mean, it's amazing, the devotion and dedication to the town. And I'm sure working with Bill has been a godsend, because he, Bill, I absolutely, I could see your signature all over the capital improvement plan. It was excellent. And for the newbie on the board, I can understand, you know, as I'm walking through this, it really became very clear. And the idea of spreading it out over 10 years and really taking a look and basically getting out of being reactive and more proactive, I thought was spectacular, and I thank you all. Any other questions, really, I think I'd hold for our, our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Turkish. Peter?
Again, a ton of work, more than a ton of work. Very much interested in inventory of assets, useful life schedules, disposable of expired assets and stuff. That almost looks like you're going to need a body to handle that. I'm look, I'm looking at you, Mr. Whittenhour. Is that, and again, I'm not looking for a major discussion, discussion in this, you know, because we've spent a lot of time on it, but I, I think this is something that, that should be in a agenda later on, is to figure out how some of these things are going to work, how they're going to be administered, and how they're, how they're going to be followed. Because, you know, we've all made studies, there used to be lots of studies in that room upstairs that nothing ever happened with them. And so, you know, we are going to do this, and I think this is extremely important, you know, because it's, it's, it's the town money, it's my money that I spend on my taxes coming up in May, and everybody else in town. So, this is, this is extremely important. And, and I, your, your comment about trying to get only emergencies in the fall, I think that makes, that makes good sense, because I, I think it makes the capital budget planning much easier if you're just dealing with, oh my God, I got a, I got a roof leak I got to take care of. But, you know, for the long-term stuff, it, I, I think if we can do it and get everything in the Springtown Meeting, it makes, makes a whole lot more sense. And I, I know we're working on, on the, on what we're going to do with one of those big schools, and ME Small is right next door, and, and, you know, it shouldn't be a secret of, you know, what we plan to do. And I know that, I know that we've, we've got a committee. Is the committee put together yet, Bill?
Uh, no, the, that, the ME Small school is part of the Mattakee's study, so the committee hasn't been put together.
Okay. And I know I've asked, I've know I've asked you this, this in the past, and, and again, this is something that's, that we, that we need to do, because if those buildings are going to go away, or, you know, they can't be repaired, we don't want to be spending money on them that we, on a dead horse, if you will.
Right, right.
Bill, thank you for attending virtually. Do you have any comments or summary you'd like to make?
No, I, I think that the, the capital budget committee is really dedicated. They always want to improve, and, and I think that the portal we established helps the departments communicate more effectively. And we can set up a meeting where I can show the board the portal, but what it does is it allows the departments over a given year to enter their projects, sequence them. There's other features which we'll pick up next year, but, you know, when you take out those mundane tasks of the process, like getting the packages together and everything else, you, you start focusing on higher functioning decisions. And I think in terms of a lot of these different projects, you know, the Mattakee's, the senior center, the library, there's some really dedicated people who want to see action. I think though, that they're all rolling up into the same sort of year and into the wastewater year. So, it's a matter of trying to figure out how we, you know, put all that together and still, you know, keep everybody engaged in the, because I, I understand these, these have been going on for a while, but they haven't been worked on for a while. So, in terms of some of the more detailed designs and things like that, and we'll, we'll get to those as we move forward to find out the more details on each of the plans.
Thank you. Bob?
If I could add just a little bit to this, and I, I know the discussion goes along, this is a very detailed package here, but, you know, I really need to acknowledge and thank the committee for their efforts, and also Bill Scott for the way, I mean, this represents what you're seeing today, a fundamental change in the way capital improvements are being worked on in the town. And it's being done at a time, you, you saw those charts, that we are entirely and completely overwhelmed, and where we have been this year with the infrastructure needs that are enormous. Working on that wastewater and carrying it so that we can implement it is a, is a massive endeavor that this community is, is wrapping up in. It's got all of the town departments engaged in it. One of the critical things that in moving to this next level capital planning that we're really coming to grips with now, I mean, for the first time, you know, we've got this 10-year plan with all of the town's needs and funding sources in it, and not just a situation where all the effort is going into what's going to happen this year, and very little effort into the, the future years. And one of the key things that we've learned, and I think you've heard it this evening, that there is a tremendous challenge with the town's facilities and buildings. Once we get, you know, this infrastructure out of the way, and, you know, you could even talk about the senior center, but you've got problems with town hall, you've got problems with most of your major structural facilities, and there hasn't been a lot of planning that's been done. There hasn't been any design work that's been done. So, we've got $250,000 practically, $230,000 set aside for the senior center ostensibly to attack that bathroom project now. But one of the problems is that building has not been comprehensively analyzed in terms of the, the major facilities. So, one of the key things that we're working with, and we are going to need at, at some point, you know, new staff, maybe to help the facilities department manage these independent buildings so that we have detailed designs, we have funding, we have a plan for each and every building improvement. So, I, I think we're going to see this year, are those bathrooms done? If we don't have a, a major failure that takes up too much of that, that money, and I, and we, we do know that the Friends of the, you know, senior center are very, very much interested in the bathrooms, but, you know, the management of the senior center and also the facilities division wants to make sure the life safety issues in that building are looked at as, as well. And none of this planning's been done. Up to now, there wasn't even a plan to do the planning. So, now we have, I, I think that the capital improvement program is starting to look like a capital improvement program. We've reached a watershed moment for this town, and, and we're biting off these items. I know it, you know, it's frustrating to, to see not everything being able to be done immediately, but I, I hope you see that $230,000 set aside at this town meeting for the senior center, hopefully devoted towards those bathrooms as, as a sign that we've got together and, and we're working on these items. But one, one of the things that is problematic is we do need more design work. We don't have infacilities, we don't have a system to do design. We need to budget it, we need to, you know, go outside the organization. I know Barnstable has a town architect. Now, we're not going to hire a town architect, but we are going to be working with the DPW to invest more in the management of the facilities. And there's the small issues, like, you know, the alarm over the senior center, there's the huge issues like Mattakee's and ME Small. But I just want you to know, these building needs have not been comprehensively thought out in the past, and we've identified that in assembling all of this information as being a number-one priority, the town, as soon as we can get, you know, this infrastructure piece moving forward. So, we appreciate everyone's patience, but I, I just want to say that I couldn't be more delighted with the progress that's been made to inventory our systems, to articulate the needs, to plan where the money's going to come from. We've got a long way to go, but I'll tell you what, that this is head and shoulders above what, what I, I've seen in the past, and everyone's working hard, and, and the town department heads as well. I love the way they've embraced this whole new way of looking at things to make sure that these 10-year plans are together and all of the information that they've had to do. So, we'll continue, we'll bring this back on the agenda. We will get those bathrooms done. I haven't seen the design, but it's going to happen, I guarantee it.
But I just hope that the people are enjoying the new bathrooms, that the alarm system works and the sprinkler system works, so they don't have their last experience on this earth in the bathroom.
In those bathrooms, right. Amen.
And do you love the lateness of the hour and the time that's been spent by certain people? I'm going to defer any comments. I agree with much of what the other board members have said, and I, and I really appreciate Bob's kind of wrapping up the, showing that we're getting into really a systems analysis of, of these various things, especially with the buildings. And, I mean, ME Small, I think, is, is a foregone conclusion that that school has got to be replaced. There's no sense, I mean, Carol Woodbury's on the record for saying that if she had it to do over again, that she would have ranked that as a higher priority than Mattakee's. So, that's, that's the school department's opinion of the condition of that building. I've been in it, not recently, but pre-COVID.
It's awful.
When they used to have people come in and read to the kids in March, I went in there, and if it rained, there were like buckets all over the place on the floor. I mean, it's just bad conditions to be working under, and so, I mean, we have to look out in terms of our planning and with our facilities maintenance, that's got to be a high priority. And I think Mark has got everybody's attention, so, so I think Bob's going to work hard on, on getting the senior center, all kidding aside, going with the, with the bathroom repairs.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the Small school?
Yeah.
One of the problems that we have is that the state has been unwilling to fund--
Because of the other--
--a critical study--
Right.
--to move that project forward, so we're sort of in limbo on it. So, that's really what's kept us from moving forward.
All right, I'm just speaking for myself now, not--
Yeah.
--as a committee, as a committee member.
Yeah.
That's where communication, again, from the Board of Selectmen could maybe force a conversation with the school district for space allocation, and how is the space being used? And why are children in moldy space with water dripping around them when there are, are other spaces? And to just say, well, you can't put little kids in a building that was built for big kids. There are more sophisticated ways to approach--
What, what are you suggesting specifically? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Looking at, how much space do we have? How many children do we have? Can we accommodate those children in space that doesn't include ME Small? You know, we've got a lot of space. We're a school district, you know? Can we look at class size? Can we look at some other things? If, for no other reason than to force a conversation? Because I am very, and this has been years, that people are working and children are going to school in that building with water dripping down the row of buckets, and--
Awful, yeah.
--goodness knows what's growing there.
Yeah.
It's unconscionable to me that we are sending little children into that building.
Bob, isn't one of the problems with funding on that school, the fact that we got money from, for the combined middle school project, and you have to wait so many years or something like that to get back on the list again?
I believe, I believe that's the case. I believe that's the case, that the, the school department has indicated strongly, you know, to the school building assistance authority that that is a priority project, and it has not ranked at the level that is required for funding. And, you know, my belief is that we ranked so high so recently on the intermediate school that, you know, they're trying to spread the money out, and that we will be on that list, and it will be coming soon. So, I, you know, I would say, you know, major building improvements there, you know, I wouldn't spend millions on that. Clearly, the school has indicated it's, it's a top priority for them. It's just a matter of having it reach a priority level for the state.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Chairman.
We'll, we'll be, you'll be back, we'll keep working on this.
So, you're, you're talking about a reappearance in addition to our hearing. Is that what, is that what you're saying, for a conversation about questions?
Well, I think we'll have to talk to the board about that. We'll have to fit it into the agenda, and I'll talk to the town administrator. We'll work that out.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, now, we have a number of new positions that were talked about earlier. A communications manager, DPW engineering project manager, DPW mechanic, local inspector for the building department, and four new firefighters slash paramedics. Bob?
So, what we thought we'd do for this evening is we have all of the department heads on hand that have requested the new positions that have been included in the budget recommendations, and we thought we'd go through them, the positions, one at a time, hear from the department heads, answer any questions. I, I want to point out, you know, there's somewhat of a chicken and an egg situation here in that the finance committee is still working diligently on reviewing the budgets and making their recommendations for town meeting. So, the funding hasn't been recommended yet by the finance committee for all of the positions. However, they all require, under the charter, acceptance by the Board of Selectmen as well. So, the, the way that we're envisioning this process is that approval on the positions before they're created would have to come from the Board of Selectmen, and what we think would be helpful is if we could get an indication from the Board of Selectmen if the positions would be approvable subject to funding, such that if it was clear that there wasn't, you know, support to move a position forward from the selectmen level, that we wouldn't have the finance committee recommend at the town meeting to fund the thing. So, we just need to bring both boards into the process with the understanding that the money hasn't been appropriated or recommended yet. So, what I would say, we're, we're short on time, that, that we could jump right in and, and go in order of the positions here, and--
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a suggestion, just for consideration, is that in the interest of time, we start with the DPW engineering project manager, the DPW mechanic, hit the building department local inspector, and then the firefighters. We sort of move the communications manager to the end, because we have a lot of folks here tonight.
That's a good idea.
It's fine with me. It doesn't matter, the order doesn't matter to me, as long as it's acceptable.
Come on up, Jeff.
All right, good evening. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Amanda Lima, our town engineer, is here as well. We'd like to talk with you about the project manager position. It will be a position that we envision falling under the town engineer to manage some of the many projects that are-- the many projects that are on our plate. Not too long ago, there were eight people within the engineering division. And I think it's been mentioned in one of your previous meetings, during some budget cuts, that was initially wiped out. And so we've rebuilt the team, so to speak, with some repurposing of positions over the last few years. But we're at a point where we really need to add the staff to manage the projects that are before us. So what we envision is a senior project manager that's able to help us with that. There's been a lot of work that's been assigned kind of to different departments within the town. So although this would be rebuilding the DPW team, or the start of rebuilding the DPW team, it certainly would help across a number of different departments within the Town of Yarmouth organization to be able to bring some of that project management experience and activity back, you know, in a more centralized fashion. I think there was some discussions that has happened before the board about the drive-in site and some other projects that have, that can be, you know, managed by the engineering team that we have. We have taken on a number of projects recently that are ongoing. But given that we'll be ramping up with wastewater and water projects, I think there's a strong need for additional support in this regard. So that's kind of a general introduction. Amanda, do you want to cover maybe more specifically about the project manager position?
Hi. Good evening. Yeah, it's like a key role is providing project management, having the consistency with taking all the departments and having it under one, kind of has, from project to project, a similar, whether it be views of procurement, or, you know, know who the point of contacts are between different departments and divisions. It really helps to have it cohesively under one, managing, you know, what's the workload? We just had a presentation from the Community Preservation Fund, and you saw those projects, such as what will happen in North Dennis Road and Weir Road, the Riverwalk Project, as Jeff said. So having it under one position allows us to be able to forecast where we're at and how we can balance, you know, the design and the permitting, the procurement into construction, similarly to, you know, the senior center, and trying to, you know, kind of get a forecast of where we are with our workloads, rather than everybody kind of spreading it out and having their separate requests for different projects. So again, it's really targeting the budgeting, planning, design, procurement, and through construction.
So happy to answer any questions you might have about the position and the vision we have for it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I strongly support this position. It's been something that I've talked about ever since I've been elected to the board, that we have a lot of ideas, and we have a lot of things, projects that are, tend to be in the planning phase. But the challenge has been, and let me just preface this by saying that I think one of the toughest decisions, and probably one of the worst decisions we ever made, was to basically eliminate the engineering department. I'm glad to see you here, Amanda. I hear of your work because I just check out the emails. I know you're very busy. I know this is, we could probably actually hire two or three of these positions, quite frankly. This is an area that's a critical need, and this is just an important step. And it's long overdue. So I'm pleased that it's before us. I'm thrilled about it. And I wholeheartedly endorse it. I want to say that we're blessed, quite frankly, to have a town planner that also is an engineer, quite frankly, because so much of this load has actually, when you think about, if you don't have this capability, where the workload drifts. And, you know, Kathy Williams has, you know, been almost like a part-time engineer in terms of the work that she has done. So my hope is that, over time, there can be an opportunity to realign things. So Kathy can go back to doing more planning and having to spend less time, you know, working on the engineering and design and bidding and oversight of projects. So I think what we'll see is, in the long run, we'll see some real benefits across the board in a variety of areas in doing this. So once again, I strongly support this. I think it's a wise move. So, thank you.
I'm supportive of the position. The only question I had is, the salary struck me as being a little low. Are you going to be able to get somebody that's capable of doing all you're asking for this kind of money?
Well, I'd suggest the salary across the board is very low for a lot of positions. This is relatively a highly graded position within the Town of Yarmouth structure, at a grade 21 is what we're envisioning. It still needs to go before the personnel board to be formally rated. And we do have the opportunity, because it is a salary position, that it has a range, that we don't necessarily have to start someone at the very beginning of that range. But it is, given the experience it's expected, as well as the professional qualifications and license, I would completely agree that it is rather low, but it is what our current range is for that type of position.
Okay. I guess my concern is, can we find somebody that's willing to?
Recruitment is another challenge we face, absolutely.
Thank you.
Dorcas.
I too strongly support this position. And as Mark was talking about, I think that it will relieve our town planner of, I agree with him, you know, of currently doing some things that probably would be better in your purview, and allowing Herb then to do more creative town planning projects. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. Peter?
I'm also in agreement that we need someone. And with Mr. Horgan said, I was going to ask the question a little different way. Where did you come up with the salary? Because I think with the requirements that you're looking for, and the background and the experience, recruitment could be difficult. And, you know, that's just a comment. And, you know, it may come to pass that, you know, I could be wrong, but it looks light on the salary to me.
I completely agree. And that grade, like I mentioned, is a relatively high grade in our organization. We have seen that our hiring of professional staff in the last few years, we haven't necessarily started people at that beginning of the salary range, which this does represent. But even with that said, I would take this opportunity to suggest that we probably need to have some kind of salary survey across the organization, just because many of our salaries are low for the qualifications we require of people.
And also, when you quarter salary, is this quartered with complete burden, or just the salary itself?
Just the salary, okay.
Thank you. I'm supportive of the position as well. Do we want to vote these positions separately?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this position, subject to the funding?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That position has been approved. Now we're going to the mechanics position.
Thank you. You can go up in the leg or you can stay. The mechanic position is one where, when we were building the new DPW, or at least designing for it, we had a vehicle study, a support study to say, hey, if we were to bring all of the in-house repair of town vehicles, you know, what would that look like from an organizational standpoint? And the study that was generated, and the consultant was Weston and Sampson that did that study for us, said that in order to maintain all of the town's vehicles in-house, we would need to have eight mechanics that do so. We currently have three, two that fall within the highway with under DPW, and one that's a dedicated police mechanic. So we're short in that regard. And that was acknowledged when we were building the DPW, that maybe we should build in some capacity within that state-of-the-art facility to support additional staffing if the need was supported and was approved. So there's certainly room within the new facility to support an additional mechanic. And there, this would bring us to a total of four if this position does get approved within the Town of Yarmouth. Still maintaining something on the order of about half of the town's vehicles in-house. The other half would still need to be sent out to private repair facilities. And maybe we can continue to make progress in the future to add additional staff. But we figured we'd take the first step with the single mechanic that could easily be supported within the new facility we have. Some additional justification in the memo that's in your packet is that we anticipate that the beginning salary for this grade being approximately $61,000 a year. We compared that with what a local repair facility charges us, that we take a large majority of our larger trucks to. And that repair was $132 an hour, roughly, is what that translates into. And so what that, doing the quick math, that's about $100 an hour savings, just by doing the repairs internal. And if that position only spends 15 hours per week, we expect they would spend more doing repairs that could have been sent out. But if they did just the 15 hours a week, that would more than cover the salary of that position. So that was a little of additional justification we wanted to provide the board as to why we would bring this, you know, position in-house, why we would look to do that repair work in-house. But it also provides, and this is an important point that I want to make, provides additional support for other activities, specifically snow and ice. We've been really challenged in finding contract operators to plow roads for us. So if we can have additional staff that can be responsive to plowing a route, to repairing vehicles that break down during snow and ice, and be able to do that in-house, rather than rely on outside sources that seem to be dwindling in recent years, that would be a huge help to our response to snow and ice and emergency response. So that's an important point, and this position would certainly be able to help us with that. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, Peter?
Yeah, this one, you know, makes a whole lot of sense. You show the delta between what your in-house and out-house, if you will, mechanics would cost. It's an old banking joke, sorry. And, you know, I think if this person works out, and it comes out, I could see you coming back and asking to have more folks like this hired, because it would be an overall savings, savings to the town, as well as continuity and oversight. And if you need an emergency vehicle fixed, you've got a body there to fix it versus waiting for, we can't touch it for two weeks. So I fully support this one.
Dorcas.
I fully support this as well. And I can see that it can give back to you some of the control over your vehicles and their availability by having this individual in-house. And certainly, as you're showing, the difference in cost between, not using Delta, just in case anyone out there doesn't know what Delta means, the difference between the cost of having it done by someone, another professional mechanic somewhere, or having it done in-house is tremendous. And I've seen your signs out on Buck Island Road for quite some time, looking for plow drivers. So it was making it clear, I think, that you're still kind of short on your number for this year.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I think it's great. Thank you.
You're going to be okay, though. It's not going to snow.
Don't say that.
I'd like to volunteer Mike to plow.
I'll do it.
So moved.
Extremely supportive. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Same here. I guess you could say it.
Yes.
Yeah. No, I support it. And I move, Mr. Chairman, you know, to approve.
Second.
Okay. Subject to funding. Yes. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That's unanimously approved.
Thank you.
How about, let's do the building inspector next. Local inspector position.
This is Mark Grills. We don't see him too often, but he's a very hard worker. Hi, Mark. Come on in.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark Grills, Town of Yarmouth, Director of Inspection Services and the Building Commissioner. I'm seeking a local inspector's position, one full-time position this year. And as a result of the amount of permitting, the amount of complaints that we receive, that we try to address on a regular basis, you know, our permitting numbers have increased about, last year, we had an increase of 590 permits. And of that, we had an additional 2,700 inspections just for building, not including electrical and plumbing, which I have a plan for down the road. I guess, I didn't come prepared to say anything. I was just here to answer questions. So if you guys have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Oh, by the way, happy birthday.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody's aware of the understaffing, if you will, of your department, and the tremendous amount of permits that are coming your way constantly, and also zoning violations, building violations, things of that nature. So perhaps you don't really have to say too much. I think that's, I think everybody's aware of that. Mark?
I agree. I think, I'm very well aware of it. We see how crazy it is in your department. And I fully support this.
I agree. The only question I have is, how are you handling it? How are we doing as far as?
We heard cats. Really, we just do the best we can with what we have. And, you know, everything's reprioritized on a daily basis. So permits and inspections are first. We're mandated by law, when we have to issue them, and when we have to have the inspection completed, the complaints we address as time allows.
Dorcas.
Fully supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Fully supportive. And I know, I do construction inspections for one of the local banks and
I support it as well. Do we have a motion to approve the position, subject to funding?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That position is approved. Thank you, Mark.
What I was going to say is, I know on occasion, not just in Yarmouth, but in all of towns, sometimes there's a little bit of a delay in the inspections. And, you know, sometimes people get upset, and I go, people can only do so much.
Right. Well, thank you all very much. And I'll be seeing you again soon. Thank you.
Next one is the Fire Department. Four new firefighter slash paramedic positions.
Good evening. Good evening. Acting Chief Sawyer. I provided a kind of a one-page look, and covers our process of this ask. So we actually, we're here in sometime in 2020, because we would have came before the board prior to applying for the SAFER grant. So we're here today because of the results of the process. So the, what we've done, and we've been successful, is, so everybody understands, we have four shifts, A, B, C, and D shift. And so increasing by four balances those shifts. And that's how, that's how it's worked for us in increasing staffing. Past reports from Collins and Matrix have said for years that we should be at 18 per shift. We're currently at 15. In 2021, we requested the increase in staffing by four. We applied for a SAFER grant. And we raised, we had the hearing to raise ambulance fees. We did that in the summer of 2021. We had the hearings. Late fall 2021, we were turned down for that SAFER grant. So FEMA, for the first time ever, had announced that the next SAFER grant was going to open in December, which is very early in the year for that grant to be offered. So we thought it fiscally responsible to apply for the SAFER again, especially where it was going to be no cost share at 100%. Because of that, it became extremely competitive. So in the fall of 2022, we were notified, we did not get the SAFER grant. So because we raised the ambulance fees in 2021, the ambulance account, the RFA, now has the funds to cover the cost share. So whenever we apply for the SAFER grant, we know that after three, after three years, we're going to have to pick up the cost of the four people. So we do that. We get the grant upfront, and then cover it with ambulance fees. And the offset of having more people on duty would offset the overtime. So you take the overtime and you slide it into salaries. And that's kind of the second part of the formula here. I wrote out formula. So 290,000 is the cost of four. So the SAFER grant, ambulance fees, and overtime savings. So we didn't get the SAFER. So we raised ambulance fees in 2021. I checked with Coastal Billing back in December. And I asked them to look back a year, a good year, from when we raised those fees. Because when you raise the fees, it takes a while to have all that come in, to see what you're going to get. So they looked back a year. So they looked back a year, and we netted an extra two-hundred-and-twenty thousand from that increase. The overtime savings would be a hundred-and-forty-one. Those savings would be transferred into wages. And just, just a note that until the four personnel would be, go to the fire academy, you wouldn't realize the full amount of that savings. So that the time away at the academy, you gotta have people there working to realize those savings. So we would send two at a time to the academy within the first year. So after that first year, then you would realize the full one-forty-one. So we recommend taking, on July one, a hundred-and-fifty thousand extra out of the RFA, making the, the annual deduction go from one-point-five million, which we currently do every July first, to one-point-six-five. And then taking the, the a hundred-and-forty-one from the overtime and sliding that over into salaries. That's pretty much it. So we're, we're not only asking for the four, but we're, we're explaining that we have a, we have it funded.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add a, a point? I, I've been working with Acting Chief Sawyer on this project, on this issue for many months now. And when we did the new contract for the local IAFF for the firefighters, it was a major issue that we, we discussed as well. And I just wanna be clear, from my perspective, I, I see this department currently operating below optimal shift levels. That's our primary problem right now. And that puts a lot of stress on the department in terms of their ability to keep up with the workflow. We're, it, it's getting more difficult as a result of that increased workflow to get staff to call back in, to return, because many, many times when you operate below the optimal shift levels, the, you know, call comes in, you need overtime immediately, and you have to call people back in. It's costly for the overtime, but it's also stressful for the staff. It's stressful for the staff that has to come back to just work the twenty-four-hour shift, and it's stressful for, you know, the men and women that are on the floor responding to those calls nonstop. It's a very busy department. I wish that we had the funding available to add more than four. The, these four do not place the town at the optimal shift levels, but it's our feeling that if we continue this now with another four, and we did four last year, we're gonna avoid situations that we see in other area communities where, you know, they need a big override, and they're trying to put on twelve at a time. I, I see this four as being important to relieve some of the stress in the department from having personnel overworked, to make it easier to get the, those shifts filled, and to ensure that the, the level of response is, is gonna be there. I, I think the Acting Chief has done a great job showing us that the funding is there and it's available to support these four. If the funding was available for six, I, I'd do six, but I, I think we could safely do the four now, and we're gonna be probably looking at this again to do, you know, another four. And, you know, we've avoided having those optimum shift levels for, for a great deal of time, and we've got about the same number of staff from a period when the calls were very, very much lower. So I just wanna say that I, I wanna thank the, the Acting Chief for the education that he's given me on this whole issue. We've had discussions with the manpower, we've had discussions with the command staff, and I think I've got a pretty good grasp on it. And so I, I just wanna let you know that I've looked into it, and, and I think it's a good move to make.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Peter?
Two, two quick questions. How, how long does the academy last?
The academy is, I believe it's eleven weeks.
Okay. So, so, so somebody could say it's, it's eleven weeks, and then, yep, just beat another, another month or two in-house?
Yeah, as soon as they get back from, it's two-week orientation.
Okay.
And they start right away. So we, we'll do, the shifts will do limited training to get them up, to keep them safe. So somebody that hasn't been to the academy, it's not allowed to go into a burning building. That, you know, they wear a special probationary shield, so they're identified, and it's, it's up to the, you know, the captains supervise them very closely, captains or lieutenants, until they go through the academy. When they come out from the academy, they're, they're good to go.
Excellent, excellent. And on the SAFER grant, do they tell you why you get turned down, or just no is what you hear?
They give you a nice letter.
Says no?
They give you a nice letter, yes. So we, we have been, we've been very successful with grants, but the, the, I knew going into the last grant that it was gonna be super competitive because they took out the cost share. So where, where our town in the past has been able to handle that, that cost share of the grant, larger cities have not. So the big cities that were applying and they got this grant, and I, I think what you're gonna see is in three years, when the money runs out, there'll be layoffs because they're not gonna be able to sustain it. So our, our plan is, we would never, we would never wanna come forth and ask, and I don't think you would want this either, to hire four people not knowing if in three years we're gonna be able to sustain that. So the way we do it, like Mr. Rittenhour said, is a, it's like, it's a formula, it's a plan that we have that's worked. So every few years, as our calls increase, we will get to eighteen per shift. It's just gonna take time to get there. We understand that, and that's why we're proposing to do this for now, and perhaps come back in a year or two and ask for four more.
Acting Chief, I'm very much, very much in favor of this for just everyone's safety.
Thank you.
Both within the department and the town, the town's people.
Thank you, Arcus.
Fully supported.
Dan.
No questions.
Mark?
No, I'm, I'm on board as well. Chief, can you just give us a reminder on the call volume, on how it's gone up over the past couple of years?
So this, we had a dip in COVID, but pre-COVID, I mean, it's been steadily raising. Right now, we're at, this past year was seven-thousand-eight-hundred runs. We, the way we were going, we anticipated going over eight-thousand some days. It's, you know, there, there, it can be twenty, twenty-four runs in a twenty-four-hour period.
Yeah.
And this past weekend, with the cold temperatures, we had, I believe it was a hundred-and-eleven calls from Friday to Sunday, when I took a look, look back at those number of calls. So it's steadily increased over the years, and it, as, as we develop and grow the town, it will, in our population ages, those numbers will, will keep going up.
Yeah. Well, I commend you for continually raising this issue, keep talking about the importance of the staffing levels. I, I wanna commend the administrator for not letting us kick the can down the road as we've done in the past. This is very important, and I, and I think I share his concern about the stress on our firefighters. In my own limited experience dealing with firefighters in Yarmouth, I found them to be incredibly professional, very, very talented, and it's a group of people I'm incredibly proud of in my, in my associations with them. And I hear nothing but great things in the community about the firefighters and the people of Yarmouth. So we have to be looking at the long view, and I, and I'm just glad that we're in a position now where we can make this move. It's certainly long overdue, and I'm just glad, I'm very glad we're at the point we are today. So I fully support this and look forward to bringing on four new, four new firefighter, EMT and paramedics.
Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve those four positions?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The, the positions are approved by unanimous vote. Thank you, Acting Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Communications manager position's next.
Okay, we, we've talked about this a, a little bit before, and, and again, I see this as one of the most critical challenges that we face, especially with all of the, the projects, all of the activity and things that we have going now. The, the communication and civic engagement with our local residents has been a real challenge. And what's made it even worse, the lack of local newspaper coverage, the Cape Cod Times just, you know, can't keep up with the demand for all of the fifteen towns in terms of the news coverage, and having lost, you know, the newspaper that covers local things in, in the past year, it's created a, a tremendous problem for us. And, you know, that coupled with kind of the lackluster performance on our own cable television systems has made it a huge challenge. And so as we're gearing up on these projects, we're always thinking about ways to enhance the civic engagement and the communication in the community. And now that we have the new cable television agreement in place, it had to slight the increase in the funds for the local access, and what I'm proposing here is that this position will be funded one-hundred percent through the local access funds available that are paid from the cable contract that the town has. And what we propose to do is to create a communications division in the town, to be staffed by a professional communications specialist with some administrative support. And we are gonna develop an organized, consistent system for sharing the information of the town government with the local residents, of enhancing the public and governmental cable television access, of coordinating with all of the departments, and hopefully getting out regular messaging out to the community, and just fundamentally changing the way we communicate with our local residents. I, I hear it on a daily basis, you know, when people say, you know, if they haven't heard of this and haven't heard of that. And although, you know, we try to use the social media, we have the town's website, it needs to be a more professional and consistent approach to it. And, and I think that's one of the failings that we've had for some time, and I, I think that this position will help address that. We've reviewed it with the Personnel Board, and we have a detailed job description. We've used local experiences throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on, on successful ones. I'm very impressed with the way the town of Barnstable, and had spoken with them about how their communications manager helps, and some of the other side benefits that they have. And it's, you know, a much bigger town than us, and, you know, they've been able to, I, I think, do a better job in getting information out, and, and we'd like to, you know, enjoy some of that success. I'm very happy to, to let you know that, you know, we've also been working with the local Cape media, who is starting up again next month, the Cape News Program, that'll be geared towards the five towns that they service. So that gives us another venue that if we had a consistent communication manager to deliver that message, it's another opportunity to get that messaging out. But without having the local ability to pull all of this information together and, and push it out, local residents don't know exactly what we're doing. So I, I feel like that we're tremendously poised to make progress in this. Paul Choffey, our IT Director, has worked with me to develop this program. It will be supervised through the IT Department and, and also, you know, by my department to make sure that they have reached all of the boards and committees and the departments to get information out. And there's, the, the budget is attached, and we have the, the budget in here for the entire cable television program. And it, at, at this point, is not even a hundred percent of the funds that we take in, so I think there's room to expand it, to improve it, but I think this is a critical first start.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. One of the items that I would recommend working into the budget, Mr. Chairman and to, into Bob, would be maybe funding or some resources for a communications plan. It might be helpful to bring in some outside expertise to help us evaluate our assets and how we can, in a maximum way, deploy them and utilize them. I think it's fair to say we've talked about this topic on numerous occasions this board has. I think it's terrific that we're at this point, and I, I fully endorse this, fully support it. And I think it's worth noting, I think it needs to be probably emphasized and maybe even overemphasized that, you know, each of these positions that have come before the board tonight have come to us with a plan for funding. So this is, this is, the, all these positions have a funding strategy behind them. And whether it's the firefighters or in the building department, so much of what they do is covered by their fees, and periodically we review the fees, DPW mechanic pays for itself, and if you look at the engineering project manager, you know, we can, we can pay outside help to do engineering project management, but actually, it's far better for us and far more effective for us to be paid for that in-house. So each of these positions, believe it or not, saves us money and has a funding plan, and I think we just have to periodically remind people of that as we go through the process and advocate for these positions with the other, with the other organizations involved. So once again, I support this, and I'm thrilled to see it before us tonight, and look forward to working with a new communications manager.
Dan.
I agree. I'm supportive, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Arcus.
I am very supportive of this. Think long overdue.
Thank you. Peter?
I'm also supportive of this, and, and the communication plan, I think, is important, and also to bring in the school department, because the school department, in, in my humble opinion, as, as well as the town, has been remiss in some of the communication that, that they could do. And if, and if we could get this all together, I think it would be good for both the school, the schools and, and for the town.
Thank you. So I'd like a motion to approve this new position. This is not gonna be really subject to funding, because this is gonna come out of the cable funds, correct?
Correct.
So moved, so moved.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that position's unanimously approved as well, Bob. Next is approval of the appointment of the Collector Treasurer's position.
Mr. Chairman?
This is a Division Head position, and I'll leave it at that. Go ahead.
Division Head position, it does not require an affirmative vote of the board, although the board has a period of time to, I guess, decline the appointment through our charter system by a four-fifths vote. And I, I just wanna say, you know, with all of the retirements that we've had, there's been, you know, a lot of movement among staff, and the recruitment process is very, very difficult. I think we hit a home run with this one in offering the position of the Treasurer Collector to Anne Marie Ellis. Now, Anne Marie, you may know already. She's got her master's degree in business administration and over twenty-five years experience as a municipal collector, treasurer, school collector, or not collector, school finance officer. And most recently, she served the town of Yarmouth as our Assistant Town Accountant. That, you know, she was anxious to come down to the Cape and get a professional finance position, and that's the position that we had available, that she was, you know, I'd say remarkably overqualified for, but did a tremendous job, really caught our attention. And recently, she had moved to Harwich to become the Finance Director there, a position that's more, you know, in keeping with the experience and qualifications. However, with the retirement here of our Treasurer Collector, you know, she was very, very, you know, close with the financial staff that we have in, in the town here, and enjoyed her work with Yarmouth tremendously. And so she was interested in returning to be the Treasurer Collector, and based on her experience, qualifications, a person that we know, I was delighted to offer the position to her, and I think that, that she's gonna be just great.
Anybody questions or comments?
I, I'm so impressed with, with her resume, her background, and obviously with, with Ed Santao leaving us, she, she provides much-needed strength in our finance department. I commend the administrator for whatever he did to recruit her to come here, and I enthusiastically endorse this appointment.
Dan?
She's obviously well-qualified. The only pause I have is she moves.
The only pause I have is she moves around a lot and she was here for two years and then left. It's just, to me, it's a concern, but I'll leave it to wiser minds. We'll hope she stays.
Yeah. I'm happy to share some perspective.
Okay.
Dorcas?
I think that she will be a welcome addition to the staff and in the town.
Peter?
I also worried a little bit about the bouncing around, but she also has corporate memory here, which is going to be, going to be good. So she'll be able to hit the ground running and Bob, just keep her happy.
I think it's a very judicious appointment and I think she brings a lot of skill and knowledge of the town. And with Ed's departure in particular, I think we need to strengthen up this financial team as best we can. I think this is a step in the right direction and I too commend the town administrator for making this appointment. We don't have to approve the appointment, but when Mark was chairman, to kind of expedite the finalization of the position, we started to move to approve.
Or endorse.
Endorse.
So do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Well, I'd like to move, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, to endorse the appointment of
Okay. That's fine.
Of this incredibly talented woman, Anne Marie Ellis, to the position of collector treasurer for the town of Yarmouth.
Okay. Motion to approve the appointment. And do I have a second? I have a second by Dorcas. Any further discussion?
Does endorse versus a point, is that something that's important for you, Bob?
Well, can I just, can I respond to that?
No, I think Mark, I'm going to let Mark respond, but I think the point he's trying to make is that it's Bob's call, but we're in accordance with Bob's call. In that way, we're basically waiving any additional time lag with the hire.
We're not appointing because it's his appointment under our charter.
So I agree, we should endorse.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The position is endorsed by unanimous vote.
Thank you very much and I want to thank the financial team for pulling this off. And also, I think it's worthy and hopefully we're going to get a lot more of a chance to do this. I just want to recognize Sue Ripley, what a tremendous resource she has been for this community with her experience, her qualifications, her operation is impeccable. And so we're going to have a lot of work to keep up with that and wish her the best in her retirement.
Okay. The next item, just a little bit of background on that. During a discussion we had late in the meeting, we had a motion to write to the housing authority under the town administrator's signature to inform them that we'd like to have an open forum for the public on the proposed development on Forest Road. And one of our residents raised the issue as to the propriety of that vote because it was not listed as a separate agenda item. It's been the practice of this board that when such questions are raised, we typically put the matter on the agenda for a vote of affirmation, which is what's being done here. So Mark, you were the one that moved that letter be sent. So why don't you remake your motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present it in our packet tonight. It's been a draft letter from the board, actually from the town administrator on behalf of the board to express interest in having some form of public forum where they can explain their proposal or their plans for developing the Forest Road site. I think as we all know, there's been a tremendous amount of public interest and community interest in this. People are asking us for information, but we really know virtually nothing, or at least I know nothing. But I think it's safe to say, we as a board know nothing about what's being proposed and what studies have been done or what analysis will be done or what their plans are, what permitting will be needed and so forth. So this letter, basically for the folks that are listening, basically gets our board on record as calling for the housing authority to hold a forum for residents and particularly neighbors, butters, in terms of what their plans are. And I know there are members of the board that will probably be interested in attending and listening and learning firsthand what's going on, but the people that really need to know are the folks that live in town and particularly in that area, which is across from a municipal well field, and be given a chance to at last ask questions about the plan. So that's what this letter is. And I would like to move, Mr. Chairman, that the board authorize the submission of this letter to the housing authority requesting a public forum on the development on Forest Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that's a unanimous vote on that. Thank you, Mark. Fire chief recruitment subcommittee report, we have a brief update. Bob?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Following the interviews that the board conducted for the position of fire chief, it had appointed a subcommittee to meet with the consultant from MRI to review the results and make recommendations back to the full board. And so we met with the consultant and the consultant has made a recommendation that the board consider interviewing an additional candidate that was part of the applicant pool that applied when it was advertised and that that be a fourth candidate for its consideration. And then we discussed that with the subcommittee and the subcommittee recommended that, that there were, it was an applicant that had a significant amount of expertise and skills that wasn't included in the initial round of final interviews. And, you know, and it was primarily because of the length of time, you know, in grade. But the consultant has taken that candidate and completed their assessment center process. And this was based on recommendations that they had received from area chiefs and commanders. And this candidate scored exceedingly high in the assessment center. And so the consultant felt that in rounding out its candidate pool to make a decision, that it would be a benefit to the board to conduct an interview. And so based on that, we have a tentative date that we've lined up for Friday, February 10, to conduct an interview of the fourth candidate and put that in our applicant pool.
Thank you. Is everybody available Friday at 5:30 to do the interview?
Yes.
That'll be the only item. It won't be a long night. We'll just do that one interview and that'll pretty much be it. We did have other nights that we tried to coordinate everybody for, but the problem was to get this hearing room. The Board of Appeals had it on Thursday and there was other problems. So unfortunately, we want it to be public, we want it to be an open process. We want, you know, whoever wants to be involved to be able to watch the interview. So by process of elimination, it came down to Friday. So that's why we're doing it then. So everybody can do that 5:30.
Mm-hmm.
Five thirty.
Yeah, 5:30. All right. Anything else on that?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to go to Dorcas next and we have a committee resignation and we have some appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first will be the resignation. You all should have in your packet a copy of Ken Smith's resignation from Yarmouth CEDC Committee. And that is because Mr. Smith is now a member of the planning board.
Okay. We have a motion to accept that resignation?
Second. I make the motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous.
We have a recommendation to appoint Jim Saban as the planning board's representative to the Community and Economic Development Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through February 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Recommendation to appoint Ken Smith as the planning board's representative to the Water Resources Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through February 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That appointment has been approved unanimously. Upcoming agenda review is next.
So there's a couple of dates that we added to the agenda review tentatively. And now we can finalize the February 10th date, that's going to be at 5:30. And we also have another tentative date on February 14. And that would be for the purpose of having a discussion and possible vote on the fire chief appointment based on all of the interviews that have been conducted. And the following week is the President's Day holiday week. We have no meeting, but a very busy meeting coming up on February 28. There's a number of hearings. And then following that, we're going to be getting into, in earnest, the review of the town meeting articles, public hearing on the budget, capital plan, and from that point forward, it's going to be all town meeting.
Looks like we're going to be busy.
Very much so.
Everybody make it on the 14th? That shouldn't be a long meeting.
6:00 PM?
Well, we were thinking 5:30.
5:30.
That's okay?
I have, I have another meeting that should be over by 5:30.
Meaning you can be here at 5:30?
No.
Or you're going to be here 6:00?
The other, the other meeting ends at 5:30 and it's, and it's in Centerville.
Oh. So maybe we better make it 6:00 then. I don't see how we can, yeah, I don't see how you can cut it that close. We'll make it a 6:00. It's not going to be, I don't anticipate it to be a long meeting. We're just, I think we're going to have a singular agenda item, really.
And Bob, you're going to bring the chocolates, right?
It is Valentine's.
I'm in enough trouble as it is. As far as to go on record, I'm going to have to make that one up.
Oh, boy. We still have time to go out there.
With this Friday interview and then allowing some time for people to absorb the information on the candidates and weigh it all out and to get something resolved on this issue, we had a problem moving dates. And so we had Friday and Valentine's Day and we apologize for that, but that's what we had to do.
No, I have, I have no problem with either one of the dates. This is important stuff to move forward.
I agree. I agree. But we also want to accommodate your schedule too. I don't want you, you know, rushing from one place to another. We'll do it at 6:00. We should be fine.
We'll have some chocolate somehow.
Yeah. We'll work it out. We'll work it out. Does anybody have anything they want to put on the agenda for now?
Got a pretty full agenda.
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Dan?
A charm.
You want to put a German on the agenda?
Yeah. I think we should put that on for every meeting.
Dorcas? Peter? We all set?
Okay. I actually, actually have two quick things. On the Forest Road, which I think probably needs to go on the agenda, is we're continuing to get additional ones and I think there should be discussion on the agenda that we need to send those all to housing with something back to the client saying, this is housing, we've sent it on to them. So the people don't think they're just being ignored.
I just, can I respond to that?
Sure.
I just want, I just want you to know, I, having worked for two congressmen for over 25 years, I have difficulty not responding to constituent mail. So every constituent letter I get, I feel obligated to respond to. I don't respond on behalf of the board.
Right.
I just say, I'm responding as myself and I try to provide some information. That's what I do. But I think it's worth the board having, and I would recommend we put this on as an agenda item, just so that we're, everything's out there in the open. We should have definitely a conversation. I endorse that as an agenda item. And I know we have two meetings coming up where it's going to be quick, but maybe, maybe there's an opportunity. I'm happy to talk about it anytime. The sooner the better. Because I think we should, we should have a board statement going back to people. And I would be comfortable if the town administrator was interested in working with the chairman to draft a statement that could be presented to the board so that when we do meet on the 14th, it won't have a lot of discussion. You can just put it on as an agenda item. We can have a draft that both the chair and the administrator like and then we can review it and then act on it.
What kind of statement are you talking about?
Well, it would be a statement to say that, you know, thank you for your letter and expression of concern. We very much appreciate hearing from you. It may interest you to know that we have asked the housing authority, the owner of the property, to hold a public forum to answer questions and that here's a copy of our letter.
And to let them know
Let them know.
That this is not a selectman project.
Right. Yeah. And we may say, you may be interested also in contacting the housing authority and here's some contact information for you to have. We would encourage you to contact them. In the meantime, feel free to keep in touch with us if you have any questions and we'll provide you whatever information we may have, you know, at the time. But I think it's important for people to know that that's not our project. We don't, we have no information on it.
I'd like to have information on it.
Well, I would too, but you know what? I'd rather, I'd rather as a selectman go to their forum and hear what they're presenting, but also hear what the residents are asking questions about. I have actually gone to visit with residents who have contacted me by, contacted us, but out of curiosity, I found the time to go out there and hear from them firsthand what their concerns are. And so I feel, you know, I've met with or talked to at least a half a dozen people and I have a pretty good idea of, see, I wasn't around the last time. I mean, I sort of, the last time this controversy, this controversial project, yeah. And so I need, I feel that I'm a little bit behind the curve in terms of just becoming familiar with some of the issues. So to me, it's been very, very helpful. So, but I do think a letter along those lines, Mr. Chairman, I think might be helpful.
That's fine.
Would you put that on the agenda for the 14th or the 28th?
I would encourage it. The letters keep coming and the emails keep coming. So like I said, I think rather than us having to deliberate over it much,
Uh-huh.
I think I put it on the agenda for the 14th so that whatever the chair and the administrator have drafted, I'm sure it'll be exactly what we need. And, you know, if the administrator wants to circulate something to the board, you know, ahead of time, so we can
I think we have it drafted already. I like that, your draft that you just recited.
Okay. Well, there you go. There you go. So, yeah, I think it would be helpful to have something for us because I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it. But I do think rather than individual select, on something like this, I think, I'm glad, I'm glad you raised it because I think we might want to send something from the board saying, thank you, we got, we got your message, we hear you, all right? But by the way, this is what we know.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is for something after annual town meeting, something that just annoys the daylights out of me, nip bottles. And it has to be something that is done by all 15 towns or all 300-plus towns in the state of Massachusetts. I walked on 149 by the West Barnstable, West Barnstable Conservation Area and within a half a mile, I counted over 200 nip bottles just on one side of the road. And so either ban them, put a, you know, a deposit on them, got to get them off the street.
I think, you know what, I don't want to pass the buck on this one, but I think a couple of other towns have actually done something on this.
Yarmouth and Mashpee have no nips.
Right, right.
And Barnstable has nips.
So maybe we want to hear from somebody who can tell us what they've done and how it's working.
Right.
The other option is
The ABC
Deposits, right? Put deposits on the Deposits, right? To put deposits on the bottles.
State action.
The ABCC came back and told Mashpee, I don't know what they did in Falmouth, they said, sorry, you cannot do that. This is our decision. It's the ABCC. That's why I'm saying it's gotta be, gotta be, like, of all 15 towns scream, that might make it work. If all 300-plus towns scream, it will have something that gets heard. But again, this is something down the line. This is nothing to worry about until way after town meeting.
Yeah.
If we do something like that, I'd recommend that we bring a chamber and also, just to give us the other side, because I know that nip bottles.
It's their best margin.
It is their best margin, and is the difference between an open door and a closed one for some of these businesses.
Yeah, but.
And, you know, it's also promotion of drinking while driving.
No question about it. I mean, nips have a valid purpose for probably a minority of people who want to get an assortment of different things or have them for guests, but I think that doesn't represent the majority of people that buy them. I think you're right. People buy them to drink them on the fly. They open the window, probably, and heave them when they're done. So it's a problem. Okay. Let's go to individual items. Does anybody have anything? Except for Mark. Mark doesn't get individual items tonight. Anybody else?
Line up on the bathrooms at the senior center.
Mark, do you want to talk some more about the bathrooms?
All right. Actually, at office hours, I actually had other people coming in wanting to talk about the bathrooms that the town has at the beaches. And, but I'll save that for my next meeting.
We'll have that as a separate agenda item, bathrooms at the beaches. All right, so let's go onto the consent agenda.
Well, it's a great consent agenda, because it's all about the donations we've received.
All money coming in.
In the police department, donations of $225. And recreation from the Yarmouth Dennis Soccer Club of $1,100. And an anonymous donation in senior services for $225.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Last item is Town Administrator Updates.
Just a couple of items we needed to talk about. Our schedule coming up, done. I have been participating this week, and I want to thank Selectman Forrest that turned me on to the Dennis Yarmouth High School's civic engagement project that we're working with the students on, and it's right up my alley. As he said in his email to me, and it was great to work with the kids and talk about some of the values that we have, major projects, and ask them for their help in spreading the word on issues such as wastewater. And I really want to salute the Social Studies Department there. Tristan Williams has done such a great job with the kids. And so I'll be back tomorrow with, I think, we have the 11th graders, and that's a fun project. And another item I want Board members to be aware of, we've really kicked in with our staff here, the departments, in our town meeting prep, especially for the wastewater. It's, as you know, a massive project. We still have the rack going strong. But we have a list of detailed items that we need accomplished by town meeting. And I just want you to know, we're meeting weekly, working on those very strongly. Communications is a huge piece. And we're gonna be, you know, trying to just get the word out to folks. And we're working, you know, very strongly on a communication strategy just to provide local residents with the information that they need to come to town meeting, prepared to address the issues that they're gonna be asked on the wastewater. So that's a massive thing that we're working on, and everyone's involved in it. And the cooperation level that I'm getting has been just tremendous. Also, I sent some materials out to Board members as an update on some of the happenings at the MacArthur School with the Cape Cod Collaborative moving in there. And it's really been great, because, you know, BSU has only been able to use the building to a certain level. And we wanted to see the building, you know, used fully. And, you know, the investment that's going on up there is great. I set up for this Thursday, if anyone's available at 2:00 PM to take a tour and see some of the improvements. And over the past couple of years, I mean, this has been $7, $8 million that's been pumped into the MacArthur School. And so it's, things are really shaping up there. But drop me a quick note. If you're interested, we're gonna be meeting 2:00, I think, over at the school with Paul Hilton from the Collaborative, and we'll take a little tour. So I'd love to have any Board members that may be available take a peek there. I think you'll be pleased.
I'm in.
I'm told I'll be pleased, so.
I'm in.
And.
I'll join you. Meet at the school?
Yeah, we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet over there. If you want, come get me a town hall. We'll walk over there.
Sounds good.
And so, last thing I wanted to let you know, we're working with the Cape Cod Commission to kick off their Cape Cod Freshwater Initiative study, which, not like we don't have anything else to do, right? But it's a big study, and I just want folks to know that, you know, we remain critically concerned about the freshwater resources, not just the saltwater embayments that are so impacted by the nitrogen. There's a lot of phosphorus and cyanobacteria, other issues with the freshwater. And we have a kickoff meeting, I think in this room, next Tuesday at 9:30 AM. And, you know, Board members, if you're around, are invited. It's primarily for the staff to kind of get oriented to the program. But, you know, we're gonna make a big deal out of it. So feel free to stop by if you're around next Tuesday at 9:30. And it's just that smattering of some of the key things going on. I don't want to get too long.
You know what I found interesting in that letter also about the Collaborative was the background of, you know, what Bridgewater had projected and the forces at work, and why that didn't materialize in terms of the way it was gonna be planned as a four-year education without leaving the Cape. I was involved in all of those presentations and all of those studies, and interacted with all of those Bridgewater people at meetings when they proposed this. And that was one of the questions I asked them, like, you know, how sure are you guys? You know, how complete is your study, your demographics, that you think you can do this? And they said, we've drilled down deep on this. No problem. I mean, it's gonna happen. It's beyond any shadow of a doubt. And then I read that, and it's like, you know, they didn't seem to be as, even in retrospect, they didn't seem to be as sure. And the thing about partnering with Cape Cod Community College, that's nothing new. I remember in the presentation, they said, we've talked to them. We're not gonna interfere with their curriculum. We're gonna build on it for the third and fourth years. But I still think that that could be a valuable educational resource to people if they had a proper strategic plan, even now. You know, there's a lot of new teachers that come on board, and they gotta get like a master's degree in five years. And they're, it's hard to get experienced teachers. There's a lot of entry-level teachers. And I can't believe that they're not catering to that crowd to pull them in. I mean, why would, why would one of those teachers want to commute off Cape when they could just go to Bridgewater? And I think Bridgewater, and I remember this in their presentation, they said, their initial presentation, they said something like, they educate somewhere like 70% of the teachers in Massachusetts. It's an extremely large number.
It is.
So, I don't know. To me, that was like an untapped market.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I just, I just.
I still think there's a need for an institution to grant four-year degrees down here. I still do not accept that.
No, I think.
Something's wrong.
I think you're right, and I think it's good that we still have a partnership with Bridgewater, because I still think that, that there may be a future for such a facility. And it's good to have this relationship with Bridgewater. As some of you may know, I coordinate Suffolk University's Master's Program in Public Administration here on the Cape. And I can tell you that over the past few years, it's been a challenge. I also teach government at the community college. I'm an adjunct professor over there. And if you look at enrollments, if you look at what's happening in graduate programs, it's a very fluid, very dynamic situation right now. The short story, there's a long story, which I won't give you. The short story, but maybe afterwards, you know, I'm happy to talk about it. But I think it's been an incredibly challenging time right now for higher ed. The enrollments at the college, I hate to even talk about the decline in enrollments at the college. You would think that in an environment like now, community college enrollments would be booming, right? They'd be really up, but they're not. The college enrollments have really declined. There's enormous competition at the state schools. But it's a very challenging time in terms of the graduate side of things. So I'm happy to give you my insights on it, but I share your dream. I think it's a great idea. I'm glad that Yarmouth made this partnership. And I think, unfortunately, what happens is because of these difficulties that we're having in sustaining the graduate courses and sustaining some other college courses, to be able to keep the facility in use and to do something that's of value to public education there at the facility with the Collaborative, I think, is terrific. They do want to utilize the, you know, the building for evening classes.
Yeah, they're still gonna do that, yeah.
Yeah, so the, I just think right now, colleges, higher education has to be incredibly flexible right now, given the uncertain and very challenging times that we're in. COVID has had a huge impact on student body populations. And I have the statistics. I'll bring them, just as an FYI item for you, in terms of the decline in community college enrollment. It's been quite significant here in Massachusetts. And it's unfortunate, because there are a lot of people that want to, but because of money, because of daycare, I mean, a whole range of issues getting in the way of people getting college degrees. So it'd be nice if we could end tonight on a happy note. Does anybody have a happy story?
Happy birthday, Mike.
Happy birthday, yes. Thank you.
We have a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.